Three on May eighteenth. Called to order the full city council meeting for May eighteen, twenty twenty-one. The clerk will call the roll to record attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley? Greeney?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Leahy? President? Marcus Nist? Lacy?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
All right, so with that, we'll get started. Just a couple of housekeeping items. Uh, because there was a little confusion on the agenda. Uh, I invited, uh, Attorney Lisa Ball to join us tonight for the first two. She did have an email sent out to us. Actually, the one and two, or one and three, sorry, uh, and give us an opinion on those. And then, um, Public Safety took up the Valley Heights, uh, kind of hearing on the polls. And I know people are here for that, so. Wh- when we're done with one and three and getting the update from Legal, uh, we can go to Public Comics. I know people from Valley Heights. Others wanted to address that. That couldn't make it to the hearing in Public Safety. So, and one thing that, uh, Jeffrey pointed out to us is on the agenda. The way it comes in is it's actually supposed to go public comment before laid on the table, uh, the way our rules work. So we'll have to get that fixed for next time, but just want to get that housekeeping there to make it fair for those who have joined us. So with that, um, I have a motion to allow Attorney Lisa Ball to speak with regards to some legal.
Yeah, make a motion to have Lisa Ball, uh, City Solicitor speak. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, so I'll turn it over to you, Lisa. Thank you for coming tonight, and I know you sent out some stuff, uh, this afternoon with regards to, I think it's one in three.
Okay, um, I don't, I don't have the city council agenda in front of me, so I'm assuming, um, the first one is regarding the.
Special counsel, uh, the payment, the one and three are the payment of the, uh, special counsel.
Okay.
Uh, from special counsel.
Right, okay, so I have that. Um, so I, I hope that all of you received, um, the opinion letter that was sent to you, uh, today. So my understanding is we were being asked, um, whether the transfers, the two, the two financial transfers, um, that were tabled. Um, whether that was proper to do that and whether, um, the Roberts Rules of Order are the, um, authority on this. Um, and as you can see from the opinion, um, clearly the ordinances, charters, um, the, the, um, rules of city council are all silent. So it is Roberts Rules, um, that does control. Um, and we go on further to tell you that section seventeen, um, part six, um, of subsidiary motions lay on the table. Um, clearly states that at a special meeting, it is dilatory and out of order to move to lay on the table. The matter for which the meeting has been called. Um, so for a special meeting in particular, it isn't proper to take a matter that has been the subject of the special meeting and lay it on the table. Um, that doesn't mean that the, the order itself, it, you know, cannot go forward. It certainly can't go forward tonight, but. Um, the motion could go forward, um, at another meeting. But the proper motion would have been to postpone, um, that particular matter indefinitely. Um, but without any, any, um, discussion on, on the matter and just tabling it. Um, the Roberts Rules of Order, um, section seventeen does clearly state that that would be dilatory and improper. So, um, I, I believe that's what we were specifically asked to address. Um, and so that would, that would be our answer. So, you know, the, the motion and the order could be brought forward at, at the next meeting. And, and certainly discussed there. I mean, it's not on the agenda tonight, but, um, just simply, you know, procedurally. It, 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 it just wasn't proper procedurally for it to be handled the way it was.
Okay, and with that, for item two, it's the budget which came from a special meeting. And laid on the table in order to then bring up with other departments, as you and I discussed, that is. That is okay to do it that way. So there's two different ways of viewing this and, and we discussed that, so. Can we get the clarification on that?
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's really, I mean, it's pretty specific about, you know, calling a special meeting, and I understand you called the special meeting for the budget. But I mean, with the budget, I mean, there's a reason to, to put that off. And it's, you know, if there's questions about it, certainly you have to bring in different departments. You're not going to be voting on the budget that night. And I think everyone understands that it's going to be laid on the table and there's a reason for laying it on the table. I think the difference is, I'm not sure what the reason was that this was laid on the table, and I'm not sure that it was stated. I wasn't there, um, but I don't know that, uh, that anything was said about specifically why. So that, that's, that's the, that's the differentiation between the two.
Okay, Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I don't see a difference, quite frankly. I, I made both motions to table in both special, in the special meeting. The motion for the budget is something we've done recently, fairly routine. Uh, Mayor Morse called two special meetings for the last, two of the last three budgets. And, uh, Mayor Murphy called this special meeting. The purpose of the special meeting is the forty-five day rule, which means we have forty-five days before July first. So if he waited until the next regularly scheduled city council meeting, we would have been, we would not have had our forty-five days if, if needed. Would have gone into the beginning of the, of the new fiscal year, causing problems. So after we passed the first reading of the budget, I asked that it would be tabled for the purpose of allowing the president to set up budget hearings, which are routine. On the two transfers, which were originally filed by Mayor Morse, which were then again refiled by Mayor McGee. And this was the third time they've been filed with us by Mayor Murphy. The, the purpose has been vetted in the Finance Committee twice. It's been vetted at a full city council meeting, a special city council meeting, and the reasons for these transfers. I, I don't think there's any more questions. I think it's regardless of where you stand and how you wish to vote for these transfers. I think every city councillor has had the opportunity to understand all sides of the issue. And probably, you know, determine which way they're going to vote. At the meeting, the special meeting, we had thirteen city councillors to start with. One city councillor had problems with their, uh, I don't know, Council Hernandez was on the phone or on an, on her laptop, but she had problems with her connection. And at some point in the meeting, without saying anything, we were informed that she, she had lost connection, was not with us. When it came time to take the vote to table, Councillor Lebron Martinez, who was with us for, for the evening, was not vocal, did not register a vote. And at that, at the time we passed the first reading, which it did pass, I said the reason, you know, to pass the first reading to hopeful. Hopefully pass this tonight, and if we cannot pass it tonight, we can do it next Tuesday. And then the reason being for that Attorney Ball was next Tuesday, you know, hoping that we would have the full city council, the full thirteen members. And at the full membership, we could take, everybody get the chance to register a vote one way or the other. And that lays into the question of what is the majority and what is a, a simple majority versus a two-thirds majority question? And there's mass state law that weighs in on that. So I, I, I think it was understood by the council, if not clearly stated as when the budget motion was made, that we were tabling it. To take it up at the next city council meeting. So I, I see no difference in what we did with the entire budget and with these two transfers, but I do respect your opinion and thank you for weighing in on them.
Counselor Lacy?
Uh, thank you so much, Attorney Ball. Welcome back and, uh, thank you for jumping right in and handling these opinions. Um, I just want to make sure that I understand the, these correctly. So the, the vote to lay on the table at a special meeting is out of order, um, because it would postpone the vote indefinitely. Because there's no other special meeting that has been named. Is, is that the, the point that's trying to get across there?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, to just table it and not have a reason to do it. I mean, I, I think certainly it, it would be impossible to say that you're going to have a special meeting. And that there's a subject of a special meeting, that there may not be additional questions that come up where it has to be. But I think, I, I think what, what Rule Seventeen is saying is if you're tabling it just to table it, and I'm not, and I'm not suggesting that's what happened. But if there isn't a reason to table it and it's just tabled, that, that's out of order, because that was, that was the reason the meeting was called to begin with.
Okay, and then secondly, um, if to the points that Counselor McGivern was making, um, we laid it on the table and it was implicitly understood that it would show up on our next agenda. Which it has or had at that point, um, is then, is that then sort of procedurally correcting that mistake of not laying it on the table? Or of having laid it on the table without a clarification as to why?
I mean, I don't think it's detrimental that it was, there was not, it wasn't stated outright. I mean, I understand it's always been done that way and, and probably that it's been done. You know, things have been laid on the table in this manner, I'm sure for, for a long time. But we were just asked procedurally just to look at that particular, was that proper to do it that way? And Roberts Rules are what controls, so I, I mean, it's, it's clear if you look at that, um, Rule Seventeen, that, that it's not proper to do it that way. Um, but like I said, I, I think it's still okay to table something at a special meeting if there's a reason to do it. And I think there is a reason to do it where the budget is concerned.
And so, um, what is the status of the item now, having sort of gone into the ether? If it's not properly on the agenda before us and it was tabled, however procedurally incorrectly, what, what is the status of the item then? Where do we go with that?
Well, I mean, it, it's, the rule does lay out what the correct procedures are. They, it indicates that a vote, the, the proper vote would have been to motion to postpone it indefinitely. I mean, that wasn't done. It, it certainly is not on the agenda tonight, so I think it probably needs to be refiled and brought up at the next meeting. I'm not sure there's any other way, um, to, to do it at this point.
So it's a refile that has to happen?
I, I believe it is.
Um, and. Even, even though they, I, I mean, I'm under the impression that they are on the agenda as laid on the table, so even though, even though they're here, they're not actually.
Well, to lay it on the table was improper. I mean, I, I, again, I'm not looking at the agenda. I'm not sure does the agenda.
It says laid on the table and then items one and three would be the transfers.
Well, um. I, I, I honestly don't know that it can be taken up tonight. I think it probably has to be refiled and I, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure, um, Jenna's with me as well. I'm not sure if Jenna has a different opinion about it, but. Um, we had talked about this and I, I'm not sure that it could be voted on tonight.
Jenna has her hand up. Uh, Jenna?
Hi, everyone. Just to weigh in, so as a, um, um, to understand more clearly, so rather than. Always ruling that motion out of order, the chair would have properly treated it as a motion to postpone indefinitely. If it was treated as a motion to postpone indefinitely, it's done for the remainder of the session. From there, it would have to be, um, renewed or refiled. So my understanding is in line with Attorney Balls is that it cannot be brought up at today's hearing, because it was improper to lay it on the table to begin with. So it would have been treated as postponed indefinitely, and in order to bring that back, it would need to be renewed or refiled.
Okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Bartley's next.
Thank you, um. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I hope everybody's, everybody's having a good night and getting ready for the ridiculously hot weather coming up. Um, th- these, uh, these two items are procedurally defective. They're not before us. At the special meeting on that night, Mr. President, if anyone recalls, I, I went to the chair and directly act, asked the acting mayor. If he in fact filed, if he in fact filed those orders, and he did. It didn't feel right to me that night to lay on the table something that we had a quorum and we could have voted on it that night. And now we know that our rules and Roberts rules say that that was a procedural defect. So these are not properly before us. I don't know if anyone else is going to do it, but I'm going to give credit to the Word of Five Councillor for bringing this to our attention, for doing the research. Getting this before us and getting this in the hands of, of the attorney and also thanks to the, to the, to the new attorney and to, and to the, and to Jen as well. Lisa's not a new attorney, but new to us on this session. I won't vote in the minority. I'm just going to go on my recollection, Mr. President, and I'm going to try to, uh, through the chair, uh, uh, answer Attorney Ball's question. But I think if Attorney Ball watched the tape, you know, the words speak for themselves, you know, I'm an old card player. And, 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 and the old card players know that, uh, then when, when you lay out cards on the table, no matter what you say, the cards speak for themselves. In this case, the tapes will speak volumes. And then, Mr. President, it was clear that the votes weren't not there. It was simply a raw political mover, maneuver. For, for the majority to be victorious. That ruling should have been, it should have, it placed out of order. So watch the tape, let the tape, don't rely on me, let the tape speak for what, what it says. The majority wasn't there, the two-thirds needed, so you, you, so you tabled it. That's what happened. That's the, that's my recollection, but that's more of what the tape says. So Attorney Ball said, why was it laid on the table? Because you weren't going to, you weren't going to get your way that night. It was defeated fair and square. But that wasn't good enough. So we've gone through the machinations of this. Now this is a fourth swing, including a special meeting. So if the acting mayor wants to file, refile this financial transfer for somebody who's no longer with us. That's, well within the acting mayor's purview. I hope that the acting mayor does not do that. I just want to make one motion, if I may, Mr. President, since Attorney Ball is here, and this is relevant to your ruling from the last time. I would like to make a motion to suspend, take up thirty-five and refer it to Legal, so we can get another opinion, you know, when, when Legal has, has an opportunity. Because this is relevant to your, uh, your ruling, uh, last week, Todd.
Second.
Right, so. Motion is suspend the rules to go out of order to thirty-five. From Counselor Bartley at the City Law Department, please clarify, uh, City Council Rule Sixty-Six specifically is a vote based on a number of councillors elected, a number of councillors present.
You don't need to read the whole thing, Todd. The, the rest of it's the rule. So we, we, I'll, I'll just hear, I'll just hear and know the rule.
Rest is the rule, just for those who are at home, so they know what we're talking about, and that would be to receive and refer to Legal.
That, that's, that's my motion. I think I heard.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, let me just put this in.
Yeah, let me take, let me.
And I'll get, I'll catch up to everyone. Next was Counselor McGivern, then Counselor Leahy, and then I just heard Counselor Bacon.
Thank you.
So Counselor McGivern?
Are we discussing the amendment or are we discussing the original motion here?
We're back to the original motion. We just took up thirty-five and sent it to Legal. That was done. We're still back.
I'm, I'm asking for discussion on a motion to go to Legal.
Oh, okay.
We have the right to weigh in on that.
Sure, okay. Uh, well, we voted, but I didn't hear that, so I do apologize. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, you know, I, I look forward to this for a ruling, for an opinion, you know, from our city solicitor. But we need to be able to discuss this, I think, as a body, and I think we should be putting part of this into committees, so we can have a discussion about it and then get a legal opinion on it.
So do you want it to go to committee? Is that what you're asking?
It goes to Charter and Rules.
All right, with a copy to Legal, is that, is that what you're asking?
That would be fine, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Talking about.
Yeah. Well, it's just, well, I mean, it's my order. Can I just speak on it?
President, if you recognize me, I'd like to have a floor.
Yeah, so that is your motion, under discussion. It was seconded under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, just, you know, respectfully, I, I'll, I'll happily, w- once we get the legal opinion, as we did tonight at the next meeting, I'll happily refer that to Charter and Rules. But I'd rather get the legal opinion, uh, for the next meeting or thereafter, instead of putting the pressure on, and right now during budget time, Mr. President. And respectfully to the, to the at-large councillors, uh, who, who, who made the motion seconded. I, I, I'd like to get, I'd like to get the opinion first. And then, once we get it, well, we, we don't have to have a dog and pony show that night. We can, we can just accept as a communication and refer that to Charter and Rules, and I'll happily be present to have a conversation about it, and I look forward to it. But tonight, I would rather, if we could respectfully, it's my order, I, I would like to have, determine where it goes. I think it should go to Legal. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern, are you done?
Mr. President, once we, uh, receive an order, it's all of our orders, and when we vote on it, we vote on it as a body. I, I, I just disagree respectfully with Counselor Bartley. I think the definition of quorum, I think definition of majority, the definition of two-thirds majority, definition, a majority of the body present. The definition of majority of the full body is very important definitions to understand, and they're often misunderstood. And whether, whether it's Roberts Rules or our rules or national law, which we can't forget. I think it's something we should have a full discussion on and then wait for the city solicitors, uh, issued opinion itself. Rather than taking the opinion and then have to challenge the opinion or question the opinion. We, we should be making very clear what we're looking for here, and that's why I ask it goes to committee first.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you, uh, and thank you for this, um, very robust conversation. Um, I learned very, uh, early on in, uh, I think either high school or my freshman days, uh, learning about Roberts Rules. I, I think the quote was, "In the land of the blind, the man with one eye is king." Um, I, I think that just goes to show, uh, all of us that we should be a little bit more, um, uh. Uh, freshened up on our Roberts Rules of Order. Uh, however, I do, I do understand what everybody is saying, but I do go along with what Councillor Bart, Bartley is saying. Is, you know, why have a robust conversation, you know, for several hours, uh, regarding something that might not be, uh, uh, might be moot? Um, we heard from Councillor Ball or Solicitor Ball, um. She basically said that we have to refile this, uh, having a conversation for an hour or so about something that's going to have to be refiled anyway. You know, let's do it the right way and let's move forward and let's get to the city's work. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon was next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so I support this order going to Legal. We, as a body, typically when an, a legal opinion is requested, send it to Legal. We do not send it to committee prior. And I think it's, from my perspective, it's actually pretty straightforward, and so I think it will just offer the clarification that we need. Um, and when we're finished with this debate, I request that we take item eleven up and refer it to Legal also. If I can get a second for that.
Second. What was that, item eleven?
Yes, please. That's a communication I sent to our acting mayor. I do not know whether he shared it with our acting solicitor or not. I asked that he would, um, but, so I would like to formally request that at this time. And I would like it to go to the city solicitor. And then, once we have a response, if further debate and discussion is found to be necessary, I'd be happy to take it up in Charter and Rules. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor?
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Now, I support Counselor Bartley's, uh, uh, order. Uh, this, uh, situation has come before us on at least four occasions. The original vote was that the motion, uh, to support this failed, and, uh, I think that we should move forward, get the legal opinion and then move forward on it. Thank you.
All right. Counselor McGivern, you got a hand up?
I, I do, Mr. President. On the, uh, item number eleven, I just questioned the chair as to how do we vote on a communication?
Communication would just be to receive.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah. You receive and refer, which I think was what was asked, receive and refer.
Well, how do we get a legal opinion on a communication?
Well, I mean, you can refer it to Legal and it's a communication asked, it, basically she's asking for.
File for, for a legal opinion.
You can have Legals, see if they want to do it that way. Uh, here is, we're back.
If I could finish, if I could finish my comments before the amendments were made?
Sure.
It'll be very quick, and I, I think we have to get on with business, to be quite frank. Um.
Second.
Just, just a reminder, and I know Attorney Ball is hopping into this, and actually both of our attorneys are, are two, two very fine attorneys. Are hopping into something in, in the middle of it. This, these two orders filed by Counselor Murphy were filed because of a challenge to orders that were filed by, by Mayor Ma, Mayor McGee at the time. And they were challenged because he filed them after Mayor Morse had originally filed them and stepped down. So the, these are, these are replacement orders, and that's what the purpose has been all along. And I, I've only, you know, quite frankly, I've made up my mind. I don't care how anyone votes. I understand both sides of the issue. I respect the way people are voting. But I've always just said, we need to get thirteen people to vote on something that's controversial. And I've, I've, I've taken and made motions that, you know, that that would happen, and I've been accused of manipulating rules. I've been accused of misinterpretation of rules, and I've been accused of a number of different things, which I find, uh. You know, quite frankly untrue and unjust the way that they're being done, because if you really read between the lines, it's the accusers who are trying to manipulate the rules and say that this is over with. Um, one way or the other, you know, back day is going to be back day. And, and whether we vote in favor of it or we vote, vote against it, that's fine. But I think the city council should just take a final vote, is all I ask at some point in time.
All right, so with that, just for clarification for those who are at home, there are two items on the agenda that were laid on the table. As Legal has said, they really shouldn't be there, but as a reminder to the last meeting, we made rulings and then said to lay them on the table because we need legal opinions. So that's why they're there. It's not that we're trying to lay them on the table. We had to get the legal opinions as to do something with them. So Legal is saying they should not be there, so they, we won't act on them tonight pursuant to Legal. As far as my ruling, uh, that night, whether or not we could do this, I went back and this is where I talked to Attorney Ball is. And, and as she mentioned it, we've done this several times, specifically regarding the budgets, and we just did it a few days ago. Um, so it's not that it was uncommon. It was something that we've done in prior practice, and that's why I made my ruling that way. Uh, Counselor Ball has said that is correct, but there are distinctions to it, and I think that's the learning curve we need here is that. If you're going to lay it on the table or reasons to postpone, I guess this new way to say it is, you have to have reasons to do it, and that's the fine line here. So for me, I am, uh, I accept the ruling from Counselor Ball, and I see the distinction to that. And that way we can move forward to make sure that we do the process correctly going forward. So with that, the motion was for thirty-five, if I'm correct, Counselor Bartley, it was thirty-five. The first one was to receive and refer to Legal to get an opinion.
And, and we voted on that, Todd.
Yeah, well, Counselor McGivern had a procedural question, hence of, prior to the vote, he wanted to discuss it, so.
Well, I guess you need a motion to reconsider then, so we can just do it, but I, I.
He had voted on something without discussion.
Right, so he wanted discussion, and I can see his hand prior to that, but here it's, the motion is to send to Legal. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Next was a communication from item eleven. Which was to take out of order that was seconded and to send it to Legal, receive and refer to Legal. All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Okay, now we're back to one and three. We really can't do, two is just the budget sitting there.
So does eleven pass?
Yeah, eleven passed. There was only one no.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, I just want to rule, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry about that. I was just looking at the agenda here.
Okay.
Make sure we're back on track. So two is the budget. Four and five, I like to hold off on because, as I said, as a procedural matter, public comments supposed to come first, of which we do have Valley Heights people and some other people. Uh, who wanted to comment on, uh, five, I think it was. So motion is to go to public comment, which really should be first on the agenda, the way if you look at.
Make a motion to go to public comment. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So if there's.
A point of information, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Aren't we supposed to be having a public hearing on this tonight?
Well, that was what I was asking, but the public hearing, from what I understand, was done in Public Safety.
We, we didn't publicize the public hearing.
No. And that would be, it would be on tonight.
Residents.
Yeah, that would be on for tonight.
I agree with Counselor McGivern.
Yeah. That's what, that's what I, I said as well, but there was confusion on that, but the, it really should be on for the public tonight. But I just want to make sure they're heard, no comment or through the public, um, session. So here, we're going to the public comments.
Well, Mr. President.
Anyways, so.
Just a point of order?
Go ahead.
Can, can you, I, I'm happy to hear from the public. I, I truly am, but. Can, can you rule on Counselor McGivern's point of information? Because if, I, I don't. Because.
I believe it's supposed to be.
Are these, are these ma, these matters before us? Because I think we had a public hearing, and I don't.
It's supposed to be on the agenda as a public hearing for the polls on. It's supposed to be on the agenda as a public hearing for the polls on Valley Heights.
I mean, I see him at 20F, so.
Yeah, I think what it was is they incorporated them in the public safety, the section.
Yeah. So I, I, I think procedurally we're okay. I, I just, I just want you to say that and rule on that.
No, that's what I am saying, that it is listed.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you say that, so.
No, that it is listed in the public safety section, but that should be to have that public hearing on the polls.
Okay, thank you.
Which we also brought up in public safety to address it all.
Do, do, do you want me to, do you want me to open the public hearing, Mr. President?
Wait, wait, let, let me just go to public comment first. There's only a couple there for that. Anyone for Valley Heights, just wait for the motion to go to, uh, the public hearing. So if you're anything but Valley Heights and public comment, please raise your hand and I will call on you. As a reminder, if you have not done public comment before, it's a minute and a half around, uh, a minute, I will just let you know, give you a polite heads up and you can finish off from there. And please state your full name and address. Counselor Lisi, you had a question?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, so I think, you know, the requirement of the public hearing is that it's advertised and so.
They, they did advertise it.
They did.
They did.
Even, even the one that was in committee?
Yep.
It was, it was publicly advertised with the, um, notice in the papers for two weeks.
That was all, we vetted that with, uh, Kate, uh, Kate Craven, um.
Kate Sullivan.
Kate Sullivan, sorry, from, um, oil, gas, electric.
Right.
Kate Craven, isn't it? Jimmy?
Craven.
Craven.
Well, it's Sullivan.
Kate Sullivan Craven.
Call me whatever you guys want.
So on the motion, let's come in.
So on the motion, so public comment, first one I have.
I just want to make sure it was, it was advertised for two weeks for the public safety meeting? Or was it advertised for two weeks for, for our agenda this evening?
They advertised this through them to advertise. And it was from what I was told.
Yes, I believe it was advertised, but was it advertised for the public safety meeting? Or was it advertised for tonight?
For tonight.
Yeah. So then tonight, we have to actually allow not, not just regular public comment with the, you know, limited minutes. It's a full public hearing.
That's what I said. That's what I said. If you're doing public comment and you're from Valley Heights, wait till the public hearing. Till you get more time.
Thank you.
Okay. So first one is Emma, oh, we lost it. So Morris Patree, if I'm saying that correct, RT? Uh, George, uh, Morris? You're on mute.
Thank you so much, President McGee and counselors. My name is Morris Partey. My address is 127 St. Colby Drive here in Holyoke. And, uh, I'm speaking in favor of the cannabis regulations that were delayed, uh, at your last meeting. Uh, uh, I think it was, just a little bit of background on me. I'm a member of the second cohort of social equity in the Cannabis Control Commission's program by virtue of my residency in Holyoke for the past 15 years. Um, I'm also a secretary of the Massachusetts Cannabis Association for Delivery, one of the groups that advocated in order to get the delivery regulation passed at the state level last year. And so I just would urge the council to move full speed ahead so that there's no question amongst the cannabis entrepreneurial community that Holyoke remains as strong and, and as pro cannabis as it has been under the previous administration. So it'd be, it'd be a terrific signal to the community of cannabis entrepreneurs who, you know, we don't want them going to North Hampton or any of the other towns. So that's, uh, that's all. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much. Next I see Helen Gomez Andrews. Helen?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Don't worry.
Oh, there, there we go. Hi. Hi, my name is Helen Gomez Andrews. I live at 202 Pine Street. Um, I am a business owner here in Holyoke. I have cannabis provisional licenses for cultivation and manufacturing and retail. Um, I'm so grateful, uh, for the welcome and support of this vibrant and incredibly business friendly community. Um, and in particular, I'm grateful for my friendship with some wonderful people, including Damaris Aponte, who I, I believe she's been able to log on, but just in case she hasn't, um, I also, I, I'd like to speak on her behalf and in her support. Um, Damaris is proudly Holyoke born and raised. She's a Holyoke homeowner. She gives back to the community. She's an incredible entrepreneur and currently a Massachusetts cannabis social equity applicant and so eager to build her delivery business here in Holyoke as opposed to anywhere else of these neighboring towns that allow it. Um, as a transplant, I've been so fortunate to go through the easy permitting process here for my business. And I'm so excited to bui- build my business in this great city. I hope, uh, that you will move forward, um, these, uh, proposed changes uh, so that, um, some of your own residents like Damaris and Morris, uh, can build their own businesses here too. Um, thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Next is I see Damaris Aponte. Are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Um, hi, hello to everyone. This is Damaris Aponte. I'm sorry it's logged in. I'll be sure. I'm at a training. I apologize. But I wanted to let you guys know that I am Damaris Aponte and I'm an equity applicant here in the city of Holyoke. The reason I was able to get into this equity applicant is because I live in the city of Holyoke, which is a disproportionate city of Holyoke caught up in the drug war. Um, I, I'm from Holyoke. I own a house in Holyoke. I went through all my education in Holyoke. Um, I bought my house on Holyoke. I live on Mayor Drive now. I want to open my business in Holyoke. I want to keep my delivery in Holyoke. I don't want to go nowhere else. I want to give back to my community. So all I'm asking is for you guys to just add the delivery to the ordinance. Um, it helps people equity like myself, which means we don't have a lot of money to start the cultivators or the big dispensaries. We're just starting off little with delivery and that's what I'm coming in for. And I would really love for you guys to just, um, add it to the ordinance and, um, to be a part of it. And I want to stay in Holyoke and I want to stay working in Holyoke. Wanted to let you guys know that. And Helen, thank you so much for your kind words and just, I would like to work in the city of Holyoke. So please pass this ordinance because that's the only thing that's holding me back from applying to get my HCA to apply for that license. And that's all I have to say. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from public comment? Oh, Sean Sheridan. Sean. Sean, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Uh, there you are. Yeah, we can hear you. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President and Council. Uh, I am in the social equity program with Damaris, Morris and a bunch of others, 423 of us in all. Holyoke is a city that has been identified by the Commonwealth as a city that has been disproportionately impacted by the racist war on drugs. Holyoke has been brave. We really appreciate you for doing what you've done. It would be wonderful if you would set aside some help for people like Damaris, for people like Damaris who live in Holyoke. I do not. I live in the Pioneer Valley, but I don't live in Holyoke. Helping people in our program by keeping fees low, by reducing HCA fees to zero on all licenses would be amazingly empowering for people in Holyoke. If you could, good counsel, consider helping convince planning to allow dispensaries within the retail zones. Holyoke could do amazing things. I propose wildly that Holyoke could generate a billion dollars in tax revenue alone. If it would embrace the industry and allow it in the retail zones.
Counselor McGee too, I didn't get his address.
Appreciate your time. I, I live in Long Meadow. Thank you.
I didn't get his address, Counselor McGee.
What's your address, Sean?
I prefer not to give my street address. If you need one, I can give you one in Chickity. I live in, in Long Meadow. Thank you.
Well, Counselor McGee.
We have, we have rules here to give an address.
If you need an address, my address is 1981 Memorial Drive in Chickity, Massachusetts. Thank you.
Counselor McGee though, point of information. He doesn't live in Chickity, he lives in Long Meadow.
Right.
Sorry, I'm not.
All right. Then ignore my testimony. I appreciate your time anyway.
All right. So anyone further for public comment?
President McGee, I, I believe I inadvertently lowered Emma Kerr's hand when I moved her into the panel.
All right. So Emma Kerr, thank, thank you, Jeffrey.
Hi, I'm here to speak about the Valley Heights issue as a resident. I believe I need to wait.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be taking that up next.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands. So public comment would be closed at this time. Next would be Counselor Bartley to make a motion to go to the public hearing for.
Yeah, yeah. Mo- mo- motion to take out the table, open up the public hearing for item 20, uh.
E and F.
Check of the motion. E and F.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So here, this would be 20E. Is the Committee on Public Safety was referred that the Gas and Electric Department requests permission to locate, uh, lines and wires, cables, poles and fixtures. Uh, one pole, Valley Heights near 36 and 39. And then it goes on from there. 20F is a little more lengthy, kind of the same order with regards to placing poles within certain locations on Valley Heights. Uh, with that, we do have, uh, the gas electric here. Uh, we'll turn it over to them first and then we'll go to pu- the public.
All right. Great. Thank you. Is it appropriate for me to share my screen? Is that appropriate?
Yeah, because you're showing where the poles are going to be. So yes.
Yes, yes. I'm just going to pull up a map quickly.
And Jeffrey, you can help with that?
He has access.
There you go.
I am there. Yes. So thank you, President McGee and council members for inviting us here tonight to discuss Valley Heights. Um, we also just want to thank the residents of Valley Heights for bearing with us over the last two years as we've tried to develop a safe and reliable solution, uh, for the neighborhood. We do appreciate the feedback that we've received from the neighborhood. And we also understand the hesitancy that some neighbors have to move poles to the street from an aesthetic perspective. Um, from a safety perspective, we believe, um, placing the poles in the street along the public right of way is currently the best solution, um, that we have. So typically backyard pole lines serve a budding street. And as you can see, um, this here is the current pole line in green. And these two pole lines are only serving, um, Valley Heights. So we have Taylor Street to the west and we have, uh, Conservation Commis- Commission property to the east. Um, and these two pole lines are, are not serving obviously the, the Conservation Commission property um, and not serving Taylor Street. So really the issue, um, here is, is serving Valley Heights. Um, the current pole line and the associated right of way that was established probably about 70 plus years ago. Um, and oh, since 70 years ago, natural vegetation and physical obstructions have been installed along this pole line, making it unsafe and extremely challenging to reach this infrastructure. Um, some of the lines are 4,800 volts, uh, and especially on this aging infrastructure, it's concerning to have that level voltage in people's backyards. So HGV has been working, um, over the last two years with Verizon to develop a solution for this, for Valley Heights and relocating this hard to access aging infrastructure. Um, and due to difficulty involved in removing backyard obstructions, which we felt would be, um, very intrusive to personal property, we thought the most practical solution would be to locate the pole along the public right of way along the street. So, um, there will be seven poles set, one HGV pole and six Verizon poles. Three of the new poles that we're proposing would replace the co- concrete light structures along the street. Um, and all utility wires would be moved from the backyard to the front, um, of the properties along Valley Heights. So just quickly to walk you through this map here, um, maybe it'd be better if I put it in presentation mode. If that makes a little bit bigger for folks.
Counselor President, should you make that larger?
Yeah, make it a little bit larger. Is that any better, uh, Counselor Leahy?
If you hit your view options, you can zoom.
We can make it larger.
Make it larger.
How funny.
I'm just playing with technology.
Right click zoom.
I said, um, at the meeting last week at the Public Safety Committee meeting that we're a year into this and I'm still struggling with the technology. So, um, so excuse me, sorry about that. So this is number 42 Valley Heights here. There's already a pole located in the front of that property. So that, that's one of the poles. Um, another pole would be here and from a 36, there would be a pole between 28 and 32, a pole between 20 and 24, between 12 and 16. And so one option is that we have a pole in the cul-de-sac. That would be pole number seven. We tried to come up with a design that had the least amount of poles as possible. Uh, but we did hear from some neighbors that they do not prefer the pole in the cul-de-sac. Um, so we could locate two poles between, one between three and seven and one between four and eight here, um, if that was preferred by the neighbors. Um, and I know during the public safety comment period last week, we did hear from some neighbors that they're concerned about safety. And I just want to reassure neighbors that we have to comply with strict, um, safety regulations when, as related to electric facilities, um, from the fire department and, and other organizations. So we would make sure that these poles also comply with any associated safety regulations. Um, and then the alternative solution, so since the Public Safety Committee meeting last week, we did, Vinnie, um, my colleague, Vinnie, went out into the neighborhood, um, and showed people this alternative solution design. Um, so basically if we weren't able to locate the poles in the public right of way, we could reestablish a right of way in the backyard. Um, it would be very difficult because as we mentioned, there are many physical obstructions that have been placed by neighbors over the years. So we would have to remove, um, physical obstructions within 25 feet of the pole line, uh, give or take. Of course, we can be somewhat reasonable about that. Uh, but the voltage in some of the backyards where there's primaries, you can see the primary wires are in blue here. So it goes up to this second pole and up to this third pole. That voltage is now going to be 13,800 volts, um, which may be concerning to some to have in their backyard. It's safer to have this, these facilities, um, in a public way where they're accessible. Um, and, and we can get trucks to them quickly in case of an emergency. Um, so establishing this, this right of way could, could be a challenge. Uh, but we did have our crews walk those lines yesterday, um, at the end of last week, just to see exactly, um, what that would look like for customers' backyards. But the yards on Valley Heights are already somewhat small and so we just wouldn't want to take, um, those, those backyards away from, from customers. So we did talk to customers about which option they would prefer. We kind of gave the facts about both potential solutions. Um, and we feel like homeowners on the street were really split almost right down the middle as to what they would prefer. Uh, but many customers indicated that they would work with us one way or another. Um, so we felt really pretty good about our conversations, um, over the last week. Um, and so we're just at, the gas and electric, you know, we don't love this. I mean, it's not, um, an ideal situation, I don't think, for anybody. We have studied an underground solution, which, you know, would be approximately five times the cost. Um, and we feel it wouldn't be appropriate to put that on the backs of, of the rest of our rate payer base. Um, so at this time, yep, yes.
No, no, I, I thought you were done. I apologize. There was a.
Oh, no. No, my, my last comment, um, is that you guys have likely seen the climate legislation that has just been passed and electric utilities are going to face electrification over, you know, the next 10, 20 years, looking at electric vehicles and heating with electric sources like air source heat pumps. Um, fiber to the home is also a potential option for customers down the road. And so having these facilities in the front yard would, you know, be able to provide these services um, a little bit faster and, um, with more ease if, if we had the solutions in the front yard. with more ease if, if we had the solutions in the front yard.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Counselor Leahy first, then Counselor Bacon.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and, um, um, thank you for this presentation, Kate Sullivan Craven, um, as we all know. I know, and, uh, she does a fantastic job for the Gas Electric, and, uh, uh, she always has. Um, you, you had mentioned at the end, I was going to say there's a third option as well, and that was to go underground. But you're saying that's going to cost the ratepayers five times the amount?
Yes, yes. The underground option is very expensive. Um, and as, you know, I mentioned, the, there's twenty customers on the street. Um, and so the cost per customer would be, you know, between twenty and thirty thousand dollars.
And, and so, how, okay, so let me ask you this. So, um, how much is it going to cost the customer now, uh, uh, because what you're talking about, this is a beautiful street. This is a street that, um, you know, it, it's like kind of a hidden gem. I mean, you, you wouldn't even know it's there unless you had to go there. I mean, it's a beautiful street. So how much is it going to cost the ratepayers now?
So we have built the current plan into our budget for, um, for twenty-twenty-one, and the cost, Jeff would know exactly, is about eighty.
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand per, what, there's, what, twelve, fifteen?
So, there's nineteen, are there nineteen customers on the street? Um, there, it would be about eighty thousand for the entire project, and Verizon would take half of that cost.
Now, so who owns the poles? Does the City of Holyoke or does Verizon?
Verizon, we, we will, would only own one pole with the proposed solution, so our pole is right here, um, between the Gas Station and thirty-nine.
Then why? Why are we talking to you guys? I don't mind talking to you guys, you guys are great people, however, how come Verizon's not sitting here?
Verizon, I believe they have a representative on the call.
Alright, well, I haven't heard from that person. And secondly, how, how much does the City of Holyoke get for Verizon to, uh, to have these poles on our property? Yeah, I'm sorry.
How much do the, the City of Holyoke get for having Verizon?
Oh, we paid, we actually paid, what's that, for the on-the-poles?
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
It's, it's there, we're joint owners, so we split the cost of pole installation fifty-fifty.
We split the cost, however, if I'm, if I'm understanding this right, um, we're not joint owners. Verizon owns the poles. We only own, the City of Holyoke only owns one pole.
No, no, we're joint owners. So the one pole that we're putting in is solely owned, so Verizon's not on it, so that's on us. The other six poles are, are Verizon, because it's Verizon's maintenance area, the city is, is split in half between maintenance areas. Verizon Maintenance Area, they're the ones in charge of setting the poles.
Okay, and who's to say that? Who's going to say it's going to cost the ratepayers of Holyoke five times the amount of money if we were to put the ground, the wires underground? I mean, shouldn't Verizon take care of that cost?
Verizon would likely not go underground, so the facilities in the backyard would likely remain, and, um, we would go at the underground alone.
Verizon only has three up for this street.
So Verizon, and I still, you said there's a Verizon representative on this call, which is still, uh, uh, I haven't heard from this person. But nonetheless, um, and also to put a, a, a pole, a Verizon pole in the middle of a cul-de-sac, where these homeowners bought their houses, they saved up their money to have a beautiful, uh, green piece of, uh, land in front of them to put a, a telephone right in front of, right in the middle of a cul-de-sac? I mean, that's not an option, is it?
So there are two design options that we've talked about. One is the pole in the cul-de-sac with just trying to minimize the infrastructure as much as possible, and this alternate option, option two, would have two poles on either side of the cul-de-sac, so on, you know, along the property between three and seven, and along the property between four and eight here.
Okay, so will we know where that's going to happen, which plan we're going to have before the Honorable City Council gets the vote on this?
We would like to, if, if you were to vote on this tonight, um, we would work with, what? We would go with, we would go with option two, because we have talked to several neighbors who feel the same way as you, Councillor Leahy, about that pole in the middle of the cul-de-sac.
Well, I can't believe that was even brought up as an option. Um, I'm kind of shocked by that, but, um, I, I, I guess those are my thoughts for now.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, and thank you for this clear, um, presentation. Uh, my main question is, if the poles are moved to the front of the homes, given the concerns about the aging poles behind the homes, will those be removed as a part of this project?
So all of the infrastructure in the backyards would be removed, and then the only infrastructure that is currently on Valley Heights are three concrete streetlight poles. Those would be removed and replaced with wooden poles, um, with both secondary and primary wire on them.
So, so the old wooden poles would be removed from the backyards?
Yes, yes, and we, um, and Verizon would do that, but if they are unable to do that within sixty days or so, we would, H G N E would take that on and get them out of there.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
So I have a two-part question. Um, so first, if the lines were to go in the backyard, would that create a liability to the city if an accident on someone's property, especially with the higher voltage poles going up? Would that create a liability to the city? Secondly, if they went in to the backyard, um, wouldn't it be a little bit more difficult, and I, I believe you had expressed that earlier, but wouldn't it be difficult during storm weathers that if something should occur and, and the, the workers need to get back there, wouldn't it be creating a hazardous, uh, place to, to work, or, and to even get to at that point? Those are the two questions I had.
Thank you, Councillor. Um, certainly, the backyard facilities are challenging, especially in their current state with all the tree cover. Um, and as I mentioned, physical obstructions like swing sets, hot tubs that people have put in. Um, so it, it ma- it does make us nervous to go into the backyard, but we would have to ask customers to clear a path in their backyard and take out any physical obstruction within approximately twenty-five feet of the pole line in order for us to get a truck in there safely, um, during any type of outage event or emergency situation. Because right now, um, it's very, very difficult to access. Um, I should just show you a couple of pictures. This is the transformer, um, on the street in one of the older poles. Uh, and this transformer is serving all the customers on the odd side of the street currently, uh, and it, it needs to be replaced. Um, that transformer is on this pole that I'm pointing out right here, if you can see my cursor, um, in the next picture. So you can see it's very difficult, it's between a fence, um, and some type of shed or gazebo. Um, so we can't get a truck back here to service these facilities at this point. Um, a- a- and that is, you know, a matter of public safety and a, a major concern for us. Um, you can see this, um, this pole here obviously has two fences and a shed, and then this pole here, um, right here. You can see that there is a swing set very close by, and these are concerning things for us. And, and like I said, we don't, we don't love that, having to have this conversation. Um, we've been looking at Valley Heights for two years, trying to come up with the best solution, and we understand there's a lot of pride in this neighborhood, and, and you can see why when you drive down that street. It's, it's a great street. Um, so, we just know that we need to update this infrastructure, and it, and it needs to happen soon.
Mr. President?
Counselor Graney.
Just quickly, uh, if you could, Kate, uh, the, uh, option three, which would be the underground option, and, uh, it's been repeated that it would be five times more expensive to use the underground option. What's the rationale for it being five times more expensive? You have engineering reports, you have architect reports, uh, that would signify reason for these costs being so expensive?
Yeah, I will let Jeff, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I, I just, there was two-part question, and the last one wasn't answered, and I, I didn't.
Oh, sorry, I thought that was the two-parter. Hold on, Counselor Anderson, we'll get back to you. Let's just answer this one so we don't get lost in the shuffle, I'll come right back to you.
Sorry, Howard.
That's okay, well, that's.
I'm sorry about that, you know, I go off on tangents sometimes. I'm gonna let Jeff answer the question, um, about the underground cost.
Yeah, so we did a, a in-house estimate on that, uh, what it would take to build out, uh, the underground for the whole street, uh, all for all nineteen customers. Um, so that's going down all the streets. Uh, the main street with our high-voltage line, and putting in two pad-mounted transformers right along the curbside. And then undergrounding to each individual house. Uh, some have newer driveways, a nicer lawns, um, that sort of thing. So, obviously, your biggest cost is your excavation, uh, mainly. Um, and then we have to have, uh, our contract electricians go to all nineteen houses, and essentially, uh, replace, and in some cases relocate the meter sockets, uh, to accommodate underground, uh, facilities. Uh, all that, uh, labor and, uh, excavation work are, are all at a, a great cost, especially, uh, right now, uh, for, uh, labor and, and, uh, material.
Uh, second, just a quick, uh, follow-up on that. If there is a new street being built, you know, in the city somewhere, uh, isn't the, uh, isn't the ra- isn't the, uh, the, the right way to do this type of electrical work now underground, you do some poles anymore?
So, correct. So, uh, we actually, if there is a new street developed, uh, today, it's required that they, it, everything is placed underground, and that is, uh, that cost is with the developer.
So there's no way around that, and, uh, that, uh, you could reduce those costs? Uh, some kind of grant money, uh, some, because, uh, the way to go is underground. Now, obviously, that's the best way to go for the residents and for, uh, the future. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Well, the, was my hand up, or I, that was just a follow?
You're doing your second part of the question.
Yeah, the second part of the question was the liability, if, if something should occur, if the, if the poles were to be located in the backyards. Um, would the city find themselves on a liability if someone threw a fire like that?
Yeah, it would be, yeah.
Um, I, we, it would be in our prescriptive right-of-way, um, so, I don't know that I should make a legal comment on that, but it's something that we can look into and, um, and get back to you.
Yes, please, that's like really important, that's gonna help us, um, you know, think about how we're gonna vote on this.
Yeah.
Any other councillors with a question? So now turn it over to the public, if, uh, go to the attendees. If you have a question, raise your hand, and we can get this addressed. First one is Nairobi Rosa Serena. Are you there?
Hi, everyone.
Hi, good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everyone, my name's Nairobi Rosa Sodiano, and a lot of people know me here. I live at Seven Valley Heights. And I, um, found out about this just yesterday, unfortunately, um, and had a great conversation with Vin from Holyoke Gas and Electric, and also a few of my neighbors about what, what's gonna happen. And so, I wanted to bring up, I had a couple of questions, and I'm glad some of the stuff was answered here. But, um, my concern is, one, if the poles are installed up front, obviously, that's not an aesthetic look, right? It's a nice street without poles in the front, and, and to have those poles, it would look ugly, and it, we feel that it would devalue our homes. And so that's something that we aren't happy to have to do. But I also understand the safety part of these poles and what needs to happen as far as how much they need to do out back. And so I am, um, I'm worried about some of the things that Vin mentioned. In the third option, it states that we have to, um, be responsible for anything that has to be removed that is in the way or obstructing the access that, um, they would need. But some of these, um, wires or, or things that the vegetation that has grown out has grown that way because it hasn't been given any attention. So every four years, they're supposed to come back there, cut things down, make sure they're not obstructing those lines, and things, um, should be maintained, and that hasn't happened. And so, I'm just worried about the responsibility of the property owners having to cut that down if they, um, have to have access back there to install those poles. So I wanted to know more a little bit about that, and I'm, as, as I said, I'm supportive of, uh, doing, uh, something that doesn't devalue my home, and, and it makes it safe. And so, it's just, I hope that there's a way that we can find a way to do this in a way that it doesn't ruin the street, or it doesn't, you know, um, and it makes it us safe. That's all I have to say.
Next, eh, I, next, because they moved them to the other room, is Emma Kerr. Is Emma still here, Jeff?
Yeah, she's here.
Hi, yes, I am still here, thank you. Um, I wanted to, I guess I don't have any specific questions. Um, hi Nairobi, it's nice to meet you, um, fellow neighbor. Um, I live at twenty-four Valley Heights. Um, and I have lived here for almost five years. Um, I was happy to purchase my first home, um, in Holyoke, having moved here from, um, a less friendly market in Northampton. Um, and so I live, um, at the portion of the street that has the forty-eight hundred volt, um, pole in the backyard. So I want to make sure that we are consec- um, concentrating adequately enough on what I believe is a serious safety concern. Um, the pole, um, as you may have noticed, at twenty-four Valley Heights is on the border between myself and my neighbors, um, who are not present because they are currently renters. Um, they're at twenty-eight Valley Heights, um, and I've discussed this at length with them. Um, our pole is surrounded by many tall trees that fall on the conservation, um, property that abuts us as we, um, are on the even side of the street. Um, and as, um, Counselor Anderson Burgos mentioned, there are lots of large branches that often fall down um, and have nicked the pole and nicked the wire, um, many times. And having learned that is a higher voltage, um, situation has really started me to become more and more concerned about the um, potentially precarious situation that I find myself in. Um, so I, for one, am very much in favor of the poles moving to the front of the street. Um, just to relieve myself of that concern, I do appreciate the current, um, lovely view of the street. It is definitely a gem. However, I find myself appreciating the backyard view of the street much more, um, and learning that if we were to go with the option three, that we would have to essentially not build up anything in fifteen feet, um, of our yard. Um, my deeded edge of my property is the power line. So cutting further fifteen feet into my yard essentially reduces it by half. Um, I would lose a garden bed, I would lose a hammock. Um, these are small things, but it is about half of the yard space that I currently enjoy. And I believe many of my neighbors are in a similar situation. Um, as was mentioned, these are on the small side of yards already, and I do think we, we have maximized them quite well, um, with some infrastructure. Um, and to my neighbor's point, we may lose some, some perceived property value by having the aesthetic limitation of the poles down the front of the street, but we would improve the safety of our homes, and we would be able to improve the aesthetic value and the enjoyment factor of our backyards. I definitely want to live on a beautiful street, but. I definitely wanna live on a beautiful street, but more importantly, I want to live in a safe home. So I am definitely in favor of this um of this project and thank you.
Thank you. Next was Rick and Beth Bigelow.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Okay. Um we live at nineteen Valley Heights across the street from um Emma, so we are on the odd side of the street. I just have a couple of questions. Um when we were told that this project was underway, I asked about the option of going underground and was told that the cost would be approximately a hundred thousand dollars. But now, according to the H G and E, they're saying it's gonna be five times the eighty thousand. So in my opinion, that's four hundred thousand. So my question is, which is it? Is it a hundred thousand to put it underground? Is it four hundred thousand to put it underground? Which which is the right figure? So that's my first question. Um My second question is, who will pay for the movement of the electrical boxes within our homes? They're currently in the back of the house. If you now are bringing in the electric to the front of the house, who's gonna bear the cost of that? Is that my cost that I'm gonna incur? Is someone else gonna pay for that? Um that could be a considerable cost to each of us that live on this street. So that's another concern. Um my last concern is we have these beautiful concrete um light poles that now they're saying they're gonna take down, put up these ugly wooden um poles. That seems silly. If we have beautiful light poles, why can't they not marry something to those poles? So that aesthetically, it looks a little bit better. So that's where I'm at. Um I'm hoping someone can answer some of my questions.
Kate, do you have any answers to those questions? It's on on mute, Kate.
Um the poles would unfortunately have to be replaced by wooden poles. Um just because the infrastructure that we need to place on the poles would not uh transfer to the concrete pole. Um another question was about the figure for underground and I'm not sure where the hundred thousand came from, but it is more in the half million dollar range. Um
That's frustrating because when you one of your representatives came to our house, that was the figure that I was given. So I'm struggling with trusting some of the information you're giving, given something like that has been communicated to us.
I'm certainly sorry for any confusion that there has been. And I know you had a question about the electric service being moved. Um H G and E would pay for the electric service to be moved um on your home.
So then when you talk about the ca- total cost of the project, they're gonna have to pay for the move whether it's, no matter which option you go with. So how can you factor that into this as well?
So so on the overhead street option, not everybody's service will have to be moved. Only the ones that are like facing the back like I think yours is. So off the top of my head, there's maybe six or seven people that we would have to have an electrician come in and relocate it to uh aside of the house where we can hit it overhead from the street. So unlike the underground solution, where all nineteen would have to be done.
Okay. My last question is, we have a tree in the front yard. Does that mean we're gonna have to take down that tree in order for you to put these lines in?
No, no, no trees along. No, no, there wouldn't be. I don't recall any.
It's a huge tree.
No, I already checked it. Yeah, no, we've checked that out and we are clear of any obstructions along the street.
I just wanna go on record that I'm certainly in support of having a safe environment for the residents and for the workers of the H G and E. Absolutely, safety should be at the forefront. However, I do agree with some of my other neighbors that aesthetically, it will reduce our property values. Um the other thing I wanna say is, you know, we've had these poles in the back for as long as we've owned the house, thirty plus years. And and all the time that we've lived here, I think three times we've ever had to have somebody come in and do any sort of repairs, which is great. Um so to factor in the cost of bringing in a truck, I think is minimal because we certainly have been very lucky and what we have there has been good for all of us. So thank you for giving us the time to speak.
Thank you. Next is Tech Foundry.
Hi, yes, sorry. This is uh Francisco Andrade and Kayla Centeno. We're on thirty-five Valley Heights.
Good evening.
Uh we just had some concerns about uh well, one, if we did the, you know, if the city went with the option of the poles remaining in the backyard. Um this is the first we've heard of trucks being able to access that those poles in the back. Um because we've had a fence put in. Um and you know, we inquired with the city if our layout was all right and they approved it. Um but it certainly doesn't allow for a truck to get anywhere near that pole. So is that a change to the easement uh requirements or?
Yes, that it would be a change. If we have to get in and replace all the infrastructure in the backyard, we would need to reestablish the right of way that had has been overgrown over the past seventy years. So we would have to um within reason um be able to get around fences and any other physical obstructions that are in the backyard.
Okay. Um and would that require us to, like if our fence is seen as, you know, uh an obstruction, would we have to incur the cost of moving the fence?
We um that is the current proposal is that customers would have to bear some of the cost of moving that. Um it might be most helpful if we could come by and meet with you and talk through what's going on in your backyard. Um and Vinny could look at your fence and kind of give you an idea of like what we would need to do in order to create the right of way in the back. I think it's 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 hard to talk about it so globally because everybody's backyard is a little bit different. And we know that where we can, we may be able to get away with fifteen feet instead of twenty-five. So I'd hate to say like, you know, yes, you'd have to get rid of a fence when I don't know for sure if your fence would be impeding on that space. So I think it's best if we kind of do those, have those conversations one on one.
Yeah, this is Kayla. Um so I'm I I think I I saw you guys yesterday, um you know, surveying the neighborhood. Um my house is, we have we have a pole in the back and our fence is literally just probably like a foot away from the pole. So we kept the pole outside of our property. Um when we built the fence and we asked the uh the city hall whether or not that will be okay, even though we know that there's an easement in our house. Um when you said that you will need to have a truck access, you know, the backyard, do you mean like literally have enough room for, I don't know, I don't know what what part of the truck you call it, but like that uh top part that stretches over, you know, to go over the cables or what kind of access were you talking about when you said that you need to have access to to a vehicle, vehicle in the in the backyards?
Yeah, so um I if it's okay, I'm just gonna share my screen one more time so that I can pull that math backup. I think uh it would be helpful to this conversation. For taking a minute. So, okay, so you're number thirty-five right here. Um so basically, we would need to be able to get a bucket truck. Okay, so we're looking at the backyard right of way option. We would need be need to be able to get a bucket truck, or it would be ideal to be able to get a bucket truck to this pole ten here. Um so that would be beyond your backyard, yes, because there are primary wires. Uh that thirteen thousand eight hundred volts will be between here and Lincoln Street. So we would need to be able to get a truck at least up through where we have primary cable.
So you're talking, so you're talking about building an alley through that uh right of way?
Basically, yes, we have to reestablish the right of way that was probably built seventy years ago. And has just been overgrown and um not necessarily maintained.
Uh to be clear, are we talking about an alleyway, like some of the other streets in the neighborhood have or?
So it wouldn't have to be a paved path. It would just have to be a clear path. Um yeah, so it wouldn't be a road per se, but it would be have to be a clear path so a truck could get in there.
Okay, just like straight along that that line of utility uh poles?
Yes, right here. Yeah.
Yeah, we're definitely not in favor of that, but in my understanding, when I bought the house, an easement um as as the way as my lawyer to describe describe it to me is that uh utility easement is mostly, you know, we own the land, we pay, we we pay taxes on that land. So it's ours and we only need to give ac- access to the utility uh people that will be coming in for you know, for repairs. But so that's why I'm very surprised that that's the alternative solution, if we keep it in the backyards, because definitely that will basically get rid of my backyard. So I'm not sure. Uh you know, I'm I'm not sure if I'm wrong with that assumption, but I you know, I bought the house two years ago and I was very, very nervous about the easement part, so I did a lot of research about it. So if you could clarify that part a little bit about what an utility easement entails and you know, that would be great, but if 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 it ends up being that uh alleyway, then definitely not, not in support of that.
Okay. Any other questions from? I think it was Kayla. Hearing none. It would be Dennis Sanchez is next.
Okay. Hello?
Yep, you you are on.
Okay, um hi, I'm Dennis Sanchez from sixteen Valley Heights. Um good evening, um councillors, G and E and my neighbors who are here. Um I was here last week um for, I was against, I did a petition to against the uh Verizon poles in the front egress of Valley Heights. And um I ended up getting ten signatures and there's twenty people there, so I guess split in half, I didn't ask three of them. And um did talk to a couple that were against it, but didn't wanna say anything. They don't wanna you know, fight the fight or you know, whatever. But my things were, as far as like safety, um the they're doing the job, right? So I mean, to like the safety part would be like what, doing the job or when the job is finished, what's not gonna be safe about it? I think, you know, shouldn't we be working safely? Um I've lived here for over for eleven years, more than ten years. I've had one power outage over on my side. Um and to, I mean, I'm against for my neighbors having an alleyway, which I think that is wrong to have. Um but also, I um the cost of each job, you know, like the those numbers, four hundred thousand and eighty thousand and then we you know, Verizon's only paying for half of it, you know, and two years. They say it's taken to do this, but in the past week, they've been here like almost every day, Vinny O'Connell, you know, trying to talk to everyone and telling people that you know, you're gonna have to pay to move your stuff out of the way and stuff like that. And like I said, it's a beautiful cul-de-sac. You come by here and you look at it, it's an X amount of trees that have never ever been trimmed, that I know of, from my neighbors telling me. And that's the only danger that I would see is the trees coming onto those power lines, right? And once those power, if they did were to move everything to the front, those trees are still gonna be up there in your houses. They're not gonna be safe. So those trees were supposed to be trimmed and they never were trimmed, you know? Um and uh so like and before they were saying that they um they're saying that they have more than fifty percent approval. So and I just said I have ten signatures. That's not that's kind of misleading a little bit. And I think G and E does a great job, you know, but I'm saying it's cutting down these trees. They're big trees. There's a decent amount of them. And I don't know how much it would be to cut them down. And I know you don't, you say you don't wanna, you can't get into people's yards, but those it's those jobs right there. I don't, I don't, it it was done before and the trees were never trimmed. So for seventy years, not getting trimmed, you never had to go back there really. And if you were to, I say, I would like, now I'm begging for the underground, you know, to be able to do it that way, but the numbers are astronomical, I feel like, you know. And but for me, I would do, you know, the old school way, trim the trees the way they are. But I'm not an engineer, but I think those trees can get trimmed down. It'll be safe for the homeowners, uh you know, and and you'll be able to, you know, have them in the back and not in the front, because like I said, those low hanging wires and all those poles on the street, it's it's gonna lower the value of the homes. And I honestly feel like, you know, that's not a good idea, you know? I think G and E can do this job and do it the right way in the back or underground. But for me to just put poles in the front, just like that is just, it's 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 easy and it's not, I I I don't think it's it's gonna help us with our home values. And I mean, that's all I really gotta say. I mean, that's, I mean, I have really nothing else to say, you know, other than that. Thank you and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next was Estella Stazza, if I'm saying that correctly. I apologize if I'm not. Are you there?
My name is Estelle Staz and I live at thirty-one Valley Heights. And I have poles and I have the lines in my backyard and I've spoken several times with Vin O'Connell and asked a lot of questions. And first of all, I'd just like to say, um Dennis, and I'm sorry for this, but on the list that you gave at the Public Safety Committee meeting, you had me listed on there and you had my neighbor listed on there and neither one of us were opposed to that.
I never said that and I Okay.
And um I took the numbers down when you said them. I listened to the Public Safety Committee meeting. At any rate, I just wanna say that I am not opposed to the poles moving and neither is my neighbor at twenty-seven. I spoke with him at length. Um and he has a lot of things in his backyard. What concerns me the most is the fact that the poles that are in my backyard are gonna be increased to thirteen thousand eight hundred volts. I don't want that kind of voltage in my backyard. Um that's really not safe. And honestly, I I've only lived here for a year and a half. I bought my house in November two thousand nineteen. But I will say that when I looked at this property, I never noticed that there were not poles in the in the street. And it concerns me more that the poles are in my backyard. And um the other thing is that if there's a right of way in my backyard, it's gonna come within ten feet of my garage. The back of my garage, which I didn't add. It's always been here as part of the house. And it will be within about three feet of my patio. So I, you know, that's only, even if it's twelve feet. Uh and my fence, I have a chain link fence in the back and there are my neighbor's trees, my backyard neighbor's trees are right up against that fence and they will lose all of their trees. Uh because there is no clear path. And as my neighbors on the other side, Kayla just spoke, their fence is back there as well. And um all of that really concerns me. I don't like the idea of poles out in the street either. And I agree with the people that don't want them there, except that I don't want them in my backyard either. So if the alternative is to put them in the street, then that seems to be the safe option. I'd love to see them go underground. But I understand the expense for but I understand the expense for that as well. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you. Hold on, Dennis. Dan Kuna is next. Dan, are you there?
Does have the access.
Dan, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, Dan.
You can hear me now, okay. I don't know what happened, but hello, everybody, I like to say hello.
Good evening.
To all my neighbors and everyone else that that live on Valley Heights. As I've said the last time, it's an aesthetic thing, of course, for for intensive purposes. But to the people that just spoke that were in favor of the poles, are you in favor of having lines going down the middle of the street? From the front of the pole to the house? And having all these lines running down the middle of the street? Now Dennis is a fireman. And if you had to get a fire truck down there, you know, you might have a problem. Yeah, I got a tree trimming, a tree trimming truck, you're gonna have a problem. Secondly, I noticed when the Gas Electric put out that information, I'm looking at the map now, it says that that happens to be the city's City of Hoyle Conservation Commission, which will make the City of Hoyle's responsibility to keep all that area and all that forestry all cleaned and cleared. That should be done immediately. That would take care of the pole problem. If you did what if the commission did what they're supposed to, because they own the property, it's a Conservation Commission problem. You should clean up the back, all the back poles back there, so like they, there, I mean, I've gone up and down the street and I don't see the issue with I don't see the issue with the backyards, even on my side of the street, there's a very, there's very few houses that have fences up. So again, as I've said, I've been there so forever. And I remember growing up and this is, we've had those poles up there and like, like several people said, they haven't had power outage, no problems. I just think that the cost for going underground is ridiculous. And I don't think that those, I don't think everything that's been told has been accurate. Because I know there's been somebody that's been told that if they don't go along with this, they're not going to get fiber optics. They may not get this, they may not get that, that's kind of strong arm me. And as tenants and owners of a property, we shouldn't be strong armed, we should be asked and treated that way better. And I don't see that at all coming from Hoyle Gas Electric. Thank you very much.
Dennis, you had a follow up question?
Yes. Ms. Estelle said, sorry that I had mentioned her name and actually I didn't. The addresses that I have are sixteen, twelve, eight, four, seven, eleven, fifteen, nineteen, twenty-three, thirty-two. So I didn't use hers, which is thirty-one or twenty-seven. And she said she doesn't feel safe with poles in her backyard, there's poles in her backyard right now, you know? And she spoke with me before and she says, I don't care if, you know, they're pitting us against each other, this is terrible. She tells me, I don't care, it's gonna be across the street, so I don't care, which that goes to show how much people that have lived here a couple of years, you know, care. And I think putting, you know, I think the job can be done with, I'm creating an alleyway, I don't, I'm I'm not understanding the engineering part of this. And I and I think GNE can do this job and I think they could do it right, but obviously it's it's a lot simpler, very little money to do it. And everyone's not happy if you do it that way. If you do it the other way, obviously more money is gonna get spent. But just like I said before, she, I I forgive her because I never did use her name or her neighbors.
All right, I understand. Estelle, you have your hand up? No, am I misreading that?
Yeah, okay, I just want to say that Dennis, if you go back and listen to the Public Safety Committee meeting, you will see that you mentioned thirty-one and twenty-seven. I wrote the numbers down as you were saying them, I'm sorry, but you may have different information. As far as my saying, I don't care they're on your side of the street, after a twenty minute conversation with you, I, we were joking and I said to you, you know, they're gonna be on your side of the street anyway. I didn't say I didn't care.
You did. All right, all right.
No, I didn't.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna stop here, this is to get the information out between all parties. I know it's a little heated in the sense of what is happening, we're just trying to get as much information to make the best decision for everyone in the neighborhood. Councilor Anderson Berger, if she had a question?
Yeah, more of a statement. I I don't think residents going at each other on on, you know, in a public setting where people are watching, you guys live next to each other. And I for one, I love my neighbors and I try to work with them, I would never, this is not appropriate, so I I feel that the city council and I have, I I have confidence that the city council will do the right thing for all of the neighbors, for all of you guys. We we are going to make sure that the right thing gets done, but please, you know, amongst each other, please be peaceful, let us do the work for you, that's why you guys voted us in, thank you.
Yes, yes, apologies.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Councilor Grady.
Just quickly, I just another question to the GNE. The excavation for an underground situation, that would they, would that be done by the GNE themselves or would they put that out to bid and have they put it out to bid to get an actual cost for the for the for the underground wiring and 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 project?
Yeah, we have under contract now JSE Construction and they do all our excavation work at this time.
So you wouldn't put it out to bid, you would just go with one construction company?
It, they were awarded, they were awarded their, an annual bid each year, so it goes out to bid every year.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, you had a follow up, Dan Kuna?
Yeah, really quick. As far as pole number seven, which was located in the cul-de-sac, I realized that the third option is to remove that pole again and take it out of the cul-de-sac. The issue also going on with the cul-de-sac is that property is starting to ease, is starting to sink. There was just some major property, it's a major work done out there on in the circle with a grate that's out there, that's a drain. That had to be raised because it's actually sinking into the middle of the cul-de-sac. I think that that being in the middle of a cul-de-sac is is obviously a bad problem, but I think it should be also looked at, that the deterioration in the middle of the pole, in the middle of this cul-de-sac. I I don't see how possibly that could work for any poles out there at all. And as I said before, I think that just that keeping up the property itself back is a is a right and a property of the City of Hoyle Commission. Thank you.
Is there anyone further for Rick Bigelow?
Honey, thanks very much for having me on. As far as like the tree trimming goes, I can remember probably about ten years ago, the the group came through and cut some trees, you know, away from the wires. But one of the things I wanted to ask was the distribution voltage through the city. I'm sure there's, Valley Heights isn't the only one that's gonna have thirteen eight.
That's true.
So I mean, when 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 this, when the poles are out on the road, they're subject to being struck by car, pedestrian issues, that kind of stuff. Personally, I don't see any problem with the poles in the back in the voltage, I mean, I don't see, I don't see any problem with whatsoever. It's been fine for a lot of years.
Kate?
So since two thousand and two, HG&E has been working throughout the city to convert fourteen, or four thousand eight hundred volts infrastructure to thirteen thousand eight hundred volts. And if Valley Heights continues in the backyard, if we were to replace the infrastructure in time, that would be the only place in the city where there are primary wires in the backyard at that voltage. We have gotten all the primaries out of backyards throughout the city when we did the conversion to thirteen thousand eight hundred. So we prefer, you know, as we've said, that it would be on the street, but but that would be the only case where we'd have backyard service at that voltage.
No, I understand that you'd prefer to have it on the street and I, you know, and my wife made the point, I thought she did a very nice job talking about the safety piece of this, because I think nobody would vote against safety. I think the poles being in the back where they are right now, I think is a pretty safe bet. I mean, I've lived in this house since nineteenth, December of nineteen eighty. I think on one hand, I can count the number of times we've had issues back there. You know, with from storms, from ice, I mean, to me, if the trees are trimmed, I think it's a very safe operations, very safe installation. And, you know, there's such a discrepancy also with the cost of running the undergrounds, I mean, I don't know, maybe we could dig in a little bit deeper and really kind of dig down into that number to make sure it really is five hundred thousand dollars, that seems awfully, awfully high to me. I mean, I would think if you're running the primary down the middle of the road, you're gonna encase it all in concrete, I can see that's costly, very costly. But, I mean, electrical, I think, only has to be twenty-four to thirty inches deep. So you're not talking a massive excavation. I guess I'm just having a hard time with, and I know the cost of materials is high, I see it every day, but I do for a living. But geez, that seems like an awful, awful steep budget for trying to do this job.
All right, next I have
The last thing, can I just say one last thing? I thought Council McGivern and Mr. Grady did a great job talking about the street, the street is a gem. I think when you're out and when you're driving down the street, which I drive down the street many times a day, you can look and it's really, really nice aesthetically. And it would be a darn shame, and I think it would have a real detrimental effect on our property values. And I'm certainly sure the city council is concerned about that. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next was Nauruvi, you had a follow up question? You're on mute?
I did. I wanted to talk about, so I'm on the odd side and so we have a budding backyards with Taylor Street. And so I wanted to talk about the space that HG&E would need if if we were to go with option three and all that, would then we have to include residents from Taylor Street on maybe possibly them removing some of their things that could be obstructing that that area, like my my neighbor right behind me has a has a fence that they've installed that also covers some of that area. So I was just wondering if HG&E had has measured that and or would it only involve a Valley Heights resident, you know, having to move any of the obstructions?
Kate, do you have that?
So the majority of the obstructions would be on the Valley Heights side because the service is only serving, those poles are only serving customers on Valley Heights. We may need, you know, about a five foot buffer on the left hand side of the pole or on, is it the west side of the pole, which which abuts Taylor Street?
If anything, we may need that Taylor Street piece of it as a as a lay down area for material, if if not for truck access. So we will need to take, as Kate said, you know, five to ten feet, depending how it lays out of the residents of Taylor Street as well.
So so if we are doing, going with option three, we would be then kind of disturbing the backyards of all the residents on Taylor Street and the residents on the odd side on Valley Heights. It would be too, okay.
That's correct. And 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 the unique part of that is that, I think it's the even side of Taylor Street that abuts Valley Heights receives no service from the backyards on from that pole line, so it would be an inconvenience to them, I would imagine.
Thank you.
The other thing I should mention is that if we did say underground became more economical or we felt like, you know, we could get a grant or some some kind of fund to assist in paying for it, I believe Verizon would keep their poles in the backyard still, so you'd still need to provide access to the poles in the backyard.
It seems to me like there's a lot of unanswered questions here. I don't know how you could ever go to a vote now. There's way too many unanswered questions for this to move forward at this point.
Todd's computer just went down upstairs, so I don't know if one of the other councilors wants to take over for just a couple of minutes so he gets back up and running.
I nominate, I'll I'll make a motion to to nominate Council McGivern to chair the meeting.
And that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Thank you to our clerk and thank you to, I hope Council McGivern makes it that quick. Is there anyone else who would like to weigh in on the public hearing part of this?
Joe, it looks like there's two hands up, it looks like there's Mrs. Kerr and Kayla.
Emma Kerr and Kayla, I know that you've spoken already, but would you like to speak again?
Uh, yeah. So this is Francisco Andrade again on thirty-five Valley. The first year we bought this house, I think three years ago now, there was an issue with a tree falling on a line and it, you know, came down in our property. I was outside with my dog in the backyard five minutes before that happened, and if I was still back there, I probably wouldn't be here today. So, you know, there is a safety issue there, it sounds like there was, you know, a little bit of downplaying of that, but there definitely is some safety concern with having that in the backyard. And I think my fiance would also like that something.
Yeah, I'm, you know, because it was, sorry, because it was a tree, we had to incur the cost of, you know, fixing everything. But one of the things that I, you know, wanted to understand is, you know, the easement part. I definitely think that, you know, safety should be a priority, but I feel like my question before about, you know, how an easement would turn into an alleyway, that part wasn't answered and I'm still left unclear of why that was. So I'm just, you know, I'm I'm definitely not in favor of just reducing our backyards to basically nothing. But I just wanted to understand that part because I think that's where a lot of the confusion here lies. You know, in in regards to the third option.
Thank you. And Kayla, your hand is still up, did you want to say something?
That was, that was us.
Emma Kerr, Joe. Okay, I'm sorry, I got you now. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the public hearing?
Yes, this is Emma at twenty-four Valley Heights. I wanted to add off of Kayla and Francisco. We've also had, I live opposite them and down a little bit on the even side. And we've had some near misses, we've had some pretty significant branches come down on my side. And when we, when that happens, we get into sort of a tough position because as has been called out, it is holy oak conservation land where those trees are. And it's been called out by a few of my neighbors and a few council members that this could be solved easily if trees were being trimmed, but I just want to specifically name, trees are simply not being trimmed. So these trees are not on my property, I do not own them, I cannot trim them. So these these trees, these branches are growing and they impact the power lines and they're sort of in just like this limbo area. And it seems like it could be an easy fix, but it seems like it has fallen into sort of this just like abyss of just, it's not, I, it just seems like it's not being taken care of. And I know it seems maybe to folks like it's the obvious answer and perhaps it could be the obvious answer if the pieces were put together correctly and perhaps we could resolve this more simply. But the big trees are there, stuff is falling, stuff is not being trimmed. And if the power lines are gonna get even more higher voltage, something more serious could happen.
Thank you, Emma. The Gas and Electric, Kate, Ben, is there anything else in testimony you'd like to add before the public hearing ends?
No, I think I just, I'd just like to say to Emma's comment that if we were to develop a right of way in the backyard, then that would clear up any of those tree issues back there that is currently develop a right-of-way in the backyard, then that would clear up any of those tree issues back there, um, that is currently conservation lands or not HG&E's trees. We have trouble getting to them and accessing them with any kind of equipment. Um, so this establishing a right-of-way back there would allow us to continue tree trimming and keeping up with, uh, with those trees. So, um, but I think, you know, I took some notes and we will follow up with uh, residents that asked questions that we weren't able to answer tonight and some of the counselors as well.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for the presentation this evening. Uh, to the members of the city council, we have a few options here. Uh, we could, uh, close the public hearing, we could continue the public hearing. We could close the public hearing and, and table everything to wait for answers. Uh, suggestions, Council Bartley?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you, uh. Yeah, just to one point to public, Council McGivern's the most senior member and that's why, uh, that's why I made the motion, just for the public. So we're, besides he's done this more than once, so it helps. Um, uh, uh, so, so, second of all, uh, I, I, I'm of the opinion that we ought to table. Um, I, I'm not going to make the motion because others have to speak, Joe, but, uh, I'm of the opinion there's just too many outstanding matters. I'm of the opinion that the, the GNE, it, it, just where the rubber has at the road, needs to establish a right-of-way to the backyard and figure out the tree trimming issue, whether it's with Verizon who, you know, Council McGivern, Council Tallman, Council Leahy, they all know my opinion about Verizon. I know this is not a Verizon-driven issue. I know this is a GNE issue. Um, uh, but Verizon has multiple times turned its back on Holyoke. I don't feel like Verizon's your friend to anybody in Valley Heights or anybody, I mean, and I'm a customer, so there you go. So, but, um, but, uh, Verizon's not your friend. But the GNE is your friend. And I, I, I can't emphasize how much I respect and admire, um, the, the GNE, but at this point, I am not prepared. In fact, I, I, I'm prepared to vote no. Uh, I'm not prepared to vote yes a- at all on, on this. Um, I'd rather have more due diligence by the GNE going to the backyards, establishing a right-of-way, trimming the trees. And really, what I'd much rather have, frankly, is a forum outside of this dog and pony show where you can have something at the gas and electric, so we don't have to have the Zoom bombs and all the rest of this nonsense. You can either, you know, I, I'd really rather have the meeting at Valley Heights itself. Uh, where, where you can, you know, just to see it, everybody on, feet on the ground. And if that were the case, I would make myself available to attend it. Uh, I would not give a speech, uh, uh, at all, especially at this length. So that's, that's how I feel, Joe, and, uh, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. 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 Chairman?
Council Greenie.
Just to add to that, you know, I, I, I don't have enough information on this to vote on it tonight, too. I'd like to see an actual estimate, an actual estimate of both of, of the costs, of all the costs, of the cost for the backyard trimming of the trees, the cost for the uh, underground installation and the cost of the, uh, the poles, to, to, to weigh those differences and, uh, to weigh, and to look at the aesthetics of the neighborhood and to find a, uh, a, a logical solution where the GNE, the Hoy, City of Hoy Oak and all the people on Valley Heights can come, can, can be happy with the decision. Thank you.
Council Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hello?
Yeah.
Yes, we can, Joe.
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, so, um, I guess I'm kind of go to piggyback what other counselors have said as well. Um, I think that we should table this and get some more information. And I think that we should get some sort of, um, um, you know, uh, you know, prices for option A, option two, or option B, option C. You know, I like to go underground. However, you know, it's been known that Richmond said that it's costing five times as much, but unless I have that in writing, you know, I, I, I would like to see that. I, I want to make sure that there's not going to be a telephone pole from Verizon in the middle of a cul-de-sac with wires going to every single house. Uh, I think that's, um, that's not appropriate and, and, uh, I think that, uh, we could find out some more information. Thank you.
So I, I, I think that's when we're going to hear this across the board.
Motion to continue.
Perhaps. I see it. There's two, uh, there's two options here. Um, certainly continuing for answers, keeping the public hearing open or closing the public hearing, tabling it till we get answers. That's just, I think that's what it's coming down to, is those two options. Council Murphy?
Thank you, uh, Council President Emeritus will call you today. Uh, I, I would, uh, agree with everything that's been said. We, we don't have enough information to make the decision that's best for everybody, and that's what we got to try to come up with. But I do, and I wrote myself a note to talk to the Conservation Director about trees and see what's there. I'll also uh, put a note down to talk to the GNE about trimming. But, uh, you know, it would seem, and I, I would like to get a specific quote in terms of the underground, which seemed like that might be the, the best alternative of all. And I would imagine, uh, if we were to buy, we could spread this out. I can't imagine, even if it's we're paying a quarter million dollars to GNE depending on all of the customers, and if we were to spread that out over ten years, that, that it would be relatively a minimal cost, plus the long-term, uh, of not having power lines go down and things along that. That, that is the way we're going, so uh, it would seem like this may be a way to start it and, and continue as we move along. But I agree that we should, uh, I, whether we're closing the hearing or we're keeping it open, we don't have enough information to make the correct decision. And I, and I do, uh, support all the people that have talked. I think, I thought you all made good presentations. Uh, it's not an easy decision, so let's, let's get more information. Let's try to find the best way.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Tallman?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Chair McGivern. Um, I, I think it's important that we listen, uh, to the residents, continue to listen to them, um, and I'm very familiar with the street and it is a beautiful street. Um, this is something that, uh, I think the GNE is really, really taking a hard look at. I think we want the best available, uh, decision for, for everybody and for the city. So I, my, my thought is to possibly, uh, to, uh, continue the public hearing and, and as Kate said, she's getting some answers and they're still going to reach out to some of the, the, uh, residents up there. And I, I think some of us as counselors may, may be in touch with some of the residents because it looks like we had almost half the street weigh in tonight. So I, I think that's important. It's a very important issue for the, for the future of the residents up in that area. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second, I'll, I'll second, Council Tallman's motion.
I'm going to second it to close the public hearing for a future date in a minute. Council Vacan?
Continue.
Continue, future date.
We need to set a date certain.
Yes.
We're just trying to get Council Vacan to turn.
Telephone, Linda.
I know. I didn't mute it.
You got it.
I'm back. Um, if we could reach out, um, through you, Council McGivern, to HG&E to see what a reasonable timeframe would be for them, then we could make a motion to a date certain, but I would like them to have time to be able to answer. It seems like there's quite a lot of information being sought.
Excellent point. About to, about to pass this baton back, but I'll finish up if you want, Mr. President.
Sure, sure.
Um, uh, Council Vacan makes a good point. Kate, Ben, I think you're still with us. How much time would you need to, uh, put together the answers for that, the questions that were asked this evening? And can I ask one last question before you answer? Are there any other streets in the city? We know that new streets, new developments, it goes underground. We know that the existing part of the city, the bulk of it is above ground. Are there any streets that have similar situations where there are easements and poles in the back? The alleyways have all been changed, correct?
Yeah, Valley Heights is very, very unique. Um, it's a, it's a pretty long street, so many of the streets where there's backyard infrastructure were able to feed from a, like, from a more main road. Um, like we would be able to feed, say, from Lincoln Street. But because Valley Heights is so long, we do have to put some primary um, on, on Valley Heights. And there, there's no other situation in the city that's comparable to this.
Okay. And would you be able to give us a, a estimate of how much time you would would need? We would, what we have to do is continue the public hearing to a date certain, which would be, I believe, Mr. President, one of our future meetings, the first Tuesday or the third Tuesday of the month.
June first or June fifteenth?
Um, we have all of the information. We just need to round it all up and kind of communicate with several people that we've, that we've connected with here tonight. Uh, I think we could do it for the next meeting. Um, but maybe it would be safer to give us, what do you, you think, two weeks?
I, I think we'd be doing two weeks.
Two weeks?
Well, the, the next meeting is two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the fall, I'm not, the, going further would be four weeks.
Yeah, I, I think two weeks is reasonable.
Is there anything else we'd like to hear from the gas and electric besides everything that's been asked this evening? The motion on the floor is to continue the public hearing to our June fourth meeting.
First.
First. June first meeting at seven PM. Any further discussion? To all the residents, I think you've heard us, the public hearing will stay open. That means we'll take, uh, new testimon, any additional testimony on June first to help us make this decision. On that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, sounds unanimous. Mr. President, please take over because I have nothing in front of me but all these beautiful faces.
Yeah, thank you, and, and sorry, I, I don't know why Council Bartley turned off my computer. Just kidding. Council Bartley, just kidding.
But I do.
That was weird. The, the whole thing froze and then it was gone. So there was panic, not going to lie, pure panic. But, uh, thank you.
Jeff made me a full host. I can mute everybody.
Thank you, everyone, for, for Valley Heights for being here and, and giving us this information. It's what we need in order to make an informed decision. So June first, we'll take it back up. And whatever information we get, we can get out to you as, as soon as possible. With that, we're back to, uh, laid on the table, but that's the budget, so we'll leave that there. Next is item four. Is a motion item four? Nope, hearing none. Item five?
Motion to take up item number five.
Motion is to take up item five, or second, that was seconded. Uh, this is the Committee on Orance has referred that in order at the Hoyle Code of Orance's seven-point-ten marijuana facilities be reviewed and amended, including any amendments and definition zone requirements changes permitting process recommended that be adopted. So, uh, move from the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Only ayes. So this was laid on the table, uh, turn over to Council Lisi.
Um, you know, I'll, I'll go through this first, sure. Um, so thanks, everyone. I think, um, we are clear that this um, item as a change to the zoning ordinances requires, uh, two-thirds vote to pass. So that's a nine of thirteen. And I'll just be pretty brief with my remarks because I went into a lot more detail last time. So we're looking at the, uh, marijuana ordinances, seven dot-ten marijuana facilities. And, um, drafts have been circulated to everyone. Hopefully, everyone has had enough time to read them at this point. Um, there are five basic changes that come out of the document that you read. The first is that we extend the, uh, hours of operation to twenty-four hours for all manufacturing facilities and manufacturing facilities alone. Um, this creates the opportunity for, uh, the ma- man- manufacturing, uh, operations to create, um, three different shifts, um, which is more employment opportunities for, um, their, their staff or our, our, our residents. And then also, um, more productivity, which turns into more tax revenue. Um, second is that it reduces the setback requirements for manufacturing facilities from five hundred feet to two hundred feet. Um, we had set this back to two hundred feet for cultivation alone, but cultivation is not singled out as a particular use. And so we thought it would be more, uh, in harmony with the rest of our ordinance if we brought all manufacturing to a two-hundred-foot buffer. Um, and this is from any, um, school or facility where children are gathering. Um, three, it allows for marijuana deliveries. And this is an important tax revenue for the city. Um, and it's also important to note that the city cannot prohibit deliveries into the, the city of Holyoke. Um, and so by creating any sort of prohibitions on deliveries, we're really just, um, prohibiting ourselves from realizing the, the tax revenues there. Uh, and as all the, um, public speakers this evening, um, noted during public comment, um, that the delivery licenses are exclusively available to social equity applicants. Um, at least for the next three years, they're, they're exclusively available to social equity applicants. And as we have, um, a large, um, uh, uh, we're, we're considered a community of negative impact um, from the, um, race-based war on drugs that we really do want to move forward on deliveries to, um, create some, uh, equity there and move forward um, and, uh, create a, a degree of reparations, if you will. And then four, it creates a pre-application meeting requirement. Um, this is a direct result of, um, problems we've had where uh, applications have been given to us that have been incomplete. Um, amendments had been made, uh, over the course of the, um, public hearings and, and created a lot of confusion as to which document we were looking at. Um, and so this is a way to ensure that when we do get, uh, application before us in city council, that it's complete and satisfactory and ready for review. And that is the document that we are all looking at and acting on. And then finally, the fifth change is that it creates a site plan review component that allows the city to ensure that any conditions or, um, uh, any, any conditions are complied with. Um, once it moves from the city council and, um, over to the applicant. Um, I just want to also note that, um, you know, we, we, we began with, uh, marijuana, legalizing marijuana here in the state of Massachusetts in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, the city of Holyoke at that point in time, in two thousand and sixteen, voted uh, overwhelmingly in favor of, um, allowing for marijuana legalization. Um, it was sixty-four percent. Um, in talking to the Office of the Assessor, um, the operating, so just the operating marijuana businesses in the city have added uh, five-point-seven million dollars in real property value um, since two thousand and seventeen, when the first, uh, business was up and running. Uh, and has brought in an estimated of one-point-one million dollars in tax revenue. Um, the coast, the host community agreements are, uh, a separate pot of money, uh, that the, the, the city, uh, enjoys and um, in two thousand and nineteen, it was fifty thousand dollars. In two thousand and twenty, it grew to three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And in fiscal year twenty-one, it is now at one-point-one million dollars. Um, on top of that, we will also be collecting an excise tax, a three-percent state excise tax, tax based on sales. And that is, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, so you can see, we are bringing in a significant amount of revenue already with only four businesses up and running. And I believe that we have permitted, um, I, I think it's somewhere around twenty-five at this point in time. So if we're realizing all these, um, revenues with just four businesses up and running, um, I think we, we can safely say that we'll be enjoying, um, exponentially more revenues from the other per, the, the other projects that we've permitted that are not yet online. So those are the five, um, issues that we, uh, amendments that we made to the ordinance, extended hours, reduced setbacks, marijuana deliveries, a pre-aplic- uh, application process and, uh, a form of site plan review. Thank you.
Anyone further? Seeing none, the motion was to recommend it be adopted?
Motion to receive and adopt, pass the first reading.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass, pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for this. I do believe just before we get to the vote, this was another one that had a legal opinion, if I'm, if I can remember correctly, and motion be suspend the rules, allow Jenna to address the legal opinion before the vote, because I do believe it was either nine, seven vote. That's what we were looking for in the last meeting.
This is a, a zone change ordinance, and so we know that that takes, um, a two-thirds majority. And if, if I may, the opinion that we asked for was not on um, whether or not this vote needed nine. It was about the, the rules change that happened at some It was about the, the rules change that happened at some point in time and the fact that the city council has not been, um, passing our regular ordinances outside of zoning with a two thirds majority vote and what the impact of those prior years votes, um, would be if we haven't been following our own, own rules, that was the, the legal opinion that was sought. So if we may, um, just stay on the question here without diverting to the legal opinion, the, the legal opinion, I think, um, doesn't hold bearing on, on the zoning ordinance, we, we know what the zoning ordinance needs.
So it's gonna be nine votes, that's why I'm trying to get, make sure everyone's on the same page, cause that was the question last time. Alright, so now that that's been, Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just, I, I, and I'm not trying to doubt it, but I, I really thought that we did question whether or not this needed two thirds at the last meeting, that was also part of this question. I mean, I know there was the other question, does it always require two thirds? But it was also the question of whether this particularly requires two thirds. And, and specifically because it is zoning, obviously, we do, and now we've got a ruling saying that as well.
Okay, so just so we're on that same page, I know that came up and I wanna make sure it's fully addressed.
And Attorney Willoughby has her hand up as well.
So.
Attorney Willoughby has it, has her hand up.
And turn over to Jenna, Jenna?
Hi, I just wanted to clarify, um, the reason that the legal opinion was dropped is that my understanding was there was a discrepancy of whether this was an ordinance change or a zoning change. But as the legal opinion is written, it is a zoning, and so I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep, no, thank you very much, Ca- Counselor McGivern.
I, we have always, on the zoning language amendment, we've always done one of two thirds. I think we just had a lot of confusion, cause this, this ordinance change encompassed so much and most of us were just sleeping at the wheel at the last meeting.
On the motion.
Okay, so with that, we're back to that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the amendments.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Greeney?
No.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Paulman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Nineties, three nays.
For your vote, it has nine votes, alright, so that one passes. Now we're off to communications.
Take a motion to suspend the rules and take six, seven, and eight as a package, they're.
As a package, all those. They are all reappointments, this is from, uh, Acting Mayor Murphy, reappointing Ms. Monahan to serve as the Board of Appeals, which will expire July one, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, seven is reappointing Christopher Gothea to, uh, the local historic commission to serve a three-year term till May one, two thousand and twenty-four. And then the last one is for reappointing Jeff Trast to the emergency management, which is a one-year term, which expires May twenty-twenty-two. So this is all for the reappointments, all those in.
Motion approved, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Those are reaffirmed. Next is for the minutes of the meeting, number nine is the minutes of the May fourth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting.
Make a motion, they're all, uh, received, we all get copies.
Motion is to receive, I don't see any question. Is on amendments, all those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Ten is from Counselor Hernandez, it's a letter, uh, regarding not running for reelection for the, uh, Ward four seat.
Make a motion to receive and, uh, she'll be missed.
Motion is to receive, and I will turn it over to Counselor Hernandez.
Thank you so much, um, yes, um, as you can see in my letter, um, the, um, reasoning behind and decision that I made was due to, uh, family matters, uh, with my mom. And, um, so for right now, I'll be, um, stepping down, you know, right after December and, um, making way for others to take the baton. I'm endorsing cocaine giver, um, as she pulled out papers to represent our beautiful and dynamic ward. And I'll be missing my, you know, my, um, interaction with all of you, but I know that I'll be close by and still, um, active in our community and looking forward to a great transformation for this amazing city of Holyoke. Thank you.
Here, here.
Counselor Hernandez, thank you very much for everything, thank you for your service. Um, as I said, when you first came on, once a counselor, always a counselor. So you're always welcome in the chamber, which will at one point be opening again. Uh, but thank you once again for everything that you've done, we truly appreciate all your.
Thank you all.
Next is, so that was to receive, all those in favor? Eleven is, uh, that was already done. Twelve is the fiscal twenty-two-one spreadsheet community development block grant, that would be to just receive. All those in favor? Opposed? Thirteen is a public notice community development block grant, COVID-nineteen. All those in favor? Fourteen is a notice of community outreach meeting, uh, Wednesday, May twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one, for Pleasant Trees.
Receive.
Receive.
Steve, all those in favor? Next is petitions, you have fifteen and sixteen are renewals. One is for six twenty-four South Bridge Street, which is one pool table and six bowling alleys. For F Y E seven twenty-five renewal for a secondhand license at fifty Hoyoke, which is Hoyoke Mall. Motion be to suspend rules, take them up as a package. All those in favor? All opposed, motion would be to grant.
Grant the renewals.
Pending outstanding taxes, looks like taxes are current on them. So motion be to grant the renewals for both, all those in favor? Oh yeah, when you're off, sorry, they, you gather, when you're roll call, clerk probably, you're voting for fifteen and sixteen.
Anderson Burgos? Bartley?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Paulman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Would you mind reporting me as a yes, I'm sorry, I just have to wait for.
Sure. Two days and zero days.
So those have been renewed. Seventeen is a new special permit for, uh, one eleven Mosher Street. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? President's report quickly due to the time, uh, just an update from Hoyoke Media, I think you got a, uh, last minute communication today, uh, speaking with Scott with regards to the interpreter for our meetings. It started off as simple where we're gonna go get those who are covering the school com- school committee meetings to then Hoyoke Media's legal counsel saying that they thought there might be some, uh, liability issues to Hoyoke Media. So now, they still will pay for the interpreting, that's been approved and still gonna go forward. It doesn't come out of, you know, uh, taxpayer money comes out of the Hoyoke Media. However, we now, it's up to us to pick the interpreter and vet them, of which Scott will follow up with me with a list of, uh, those he, he was vetting. So there's three or four of them, uh, and we can pick from there or bring them in for interview, however the committee, uh, or council would like. So that just came in the legal notice from their attorney, and we'll follow up with you with the list once he gets it ordered me. With regards to the chambers, the TVs that will be mounted in order to allow public access and comment and everything else, those are in, but he's waiting for a couple pieces of equipment in order to make everything work and function accordingly. Uh, he doesn't have a timeframe on that yet, but he says hopefully by the twenty-seventh. Um, so with that, once all that is up and running, he will give us a firm date. We can invite in, uh, counselors to then do that demo that we were talking about in order to start using the chamber again. The chamber is fully carpeted and the furniture's back in and set up. So it's just now getting the, uh, apparatus in there as well as the TVs and getting everything, uh, functioning the way we would like. Um, so everyone got the legal notice from Hoyoke Media. Finally, is Glass of Born Martinez, could not make it here tonight, um, there, there's a family issue. We were wishing her the best and, and the best results from that, but she gives her, uh, uh, she apologized for not being here tonight. With that, I turn it over to Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, thank you, um, so, um, over the past maybe week and a half, uh, myself and Faith Glanville are beginning a lot of messages on the Hella Hoyoke, uh, forum regarding to the fireworks. And, uh, it was confirmed, uh, today, I spoke with the gas and electric, and they confirmed with the mayor's office and Terry's on this as well. Uh, there's not going to be fireworks this year. So, um, for all the people that have been asking, um, I just wanted to put it out there, uh, as public forum that, um, see if it works, not doing fireworks this year, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you for the report, if I could just suggest on the interpreter that we get some help from the law department. If we're going to pick someone, we're gonna have to do it as a contractor or a city employee and maybe have to create an ordinance similar to the one for our stenographer.
Okay, I will follow up with, uh. Uh, one, one final one, then I'm gonna turn it over to Counselor, uh, and then Acting Mayor Murphy. Uh, we did get phone calls today from the media with regards to the drag racing issues. Uh, I couldn't find orders in, uh, in contacting Acting Mur- uh, Acting Mayor Murphy, tongue twister there. Uh, him and I have filed a late file order to invite in, uh, the Hoyoke Police, the West Springfield Police in order to address the illegal drag racing that's going on, uh, in the city of Hoyoke and to get, uh, better, uh, solutions to the problem that we're seeing. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Counselor Murphy in order to give us an update and then answers on that one.
Well, Counselor McGee, point of information, uh, can I, can I be added to the, that order? And some time ago, I, I, I got some, um, I got the language from the Springfield City Council. Um, and I thought I sent that over to you.
That was for the dirt bikes, this is the, the cars drag racing.
Okay, okay.
The dirt bike ones we have taken up in public safety.
Thank you.
This one is, is the, the cars that media is reaching out to us, and we were scrambling to find it, and now that we have it, I'm giving the proper update to it. So Counselor Murphy.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm just, I wanna give you a quick rundown of things that are happening, so you get that report. I'm gonna try to make this quick as I can, today we swore in five new police reserve officers. Uh, we're hoping for more, but we only had five that were there, they were solid young men and, and, and I wanna thank, uh, city clerk, uh, Brennan McGee for coming up and swearing them in and, uh, it was a nice ceremony. We are also looking at taking current reserve officers and promoting them to patrol officers at a ceremony on June first. Also, and we've been doing this in the ballroom, so we can do spacing. Uh, second, I just wanna let you know, I've communicated with the Zipcar people to terminate our contract. Uh, and, uh, they have agreed, even though they could have continued on, cause we were past the original deadline, they've agreed that they're gonna pull the cars out by the end of this month. Uh, so I've, uh, notified Mr. Superintendent McManus that we, we go back to the original ordinances, which are still in effect and have never been repealed for parking. Uh, couple of things that we're trying to do development-wise, Elm and Sargent Street, we've got some people offering with some consideration of proposals. So we have worked with the housing authority to amend the contract that they had regarding options, uh, where they were gonna hold the property at the, for the, uh, Elmwood or Chestnut Street, pu- uh, s- school. So we're hoping to make Elm and Sargent Street, uh, surplus property. We think we've got some good proposals coming in there, obviously, we don't know what they are, the drag racing is a major problem. I mean, I've, I've heard up to fifty or seventy cars out there at two to three or four in the morning, uh, drag racing. So I've got a note to talk to the West Springfield Mayor, our chief, their chief of police. Uh, maybe we work on trying to, and state police are all being involved. Uh, I've had a number of complaints about it, it, it's, people have feel threatened by it beyond the fact that they're speeding, just threatened by the way they've driven down on our streets and kinda taken over our streets. Uh, I, I've got an order in here, which I'm kind of, Counselor Bartley would, uh, ask to co-sign, and I welcome his, his signature on Dean property. We're asking, and we met with, uh, the, uh, superintendent, the receiver and, uh, the principal, uh, dean to see if they would have a problem, they seem to have no problem, I mentioned it in the school committee meeting last night. There are properties at Saint Vincent in Northampton Street, which the city engineer has indicated could potentially host three homes, which would do two things, improve the sidewalk for the students walking up and down Saint Vincent Street, also provide some property tax and improve the, uh, uh, the, or clean up the litter that is, uh, consistently on, on those streets. So we're hoping that that is gonna happen in the next, uh, month or two, and, and there is an order in there. And Counselor Bartley, I welcome your close signature, and thank you for your efforts on that. Recovery Act, uh, I've been working with Alicia Zeller, we'll be meeting with Kate, uh, Jakowski and Tanya Ojek Thursday to kinda get the specifics in terms of all the administrative, there's a lot of questions. We, we've been to a number of webinars, trying to figure out, and every time you get more questions asked and, and unable to be answered, so we're still trying to get all that. But I'm hoping to get RFPs out within the next week or so and start that process. Uh, but I wanna make sure we do it the right way. Uh, we are planning on opening, as the governor has done his thing, we were already planning on June first, uh, an opening of all city services. Uh, I, myself and Sean Gonzalez will be conducting a meeting of any city employees to answer any of their questions or concerns. That'll be on June fir- uh, that'll be, uh, next week, next Monday in the ballroom. Anyone has concerns, we wanna know, we are going to, we've decided to at least start with the first week with masks to make sure that we're not trying to overrush this process, we're trying to make sure we maintain spacing. We will have someone there so that we can have contract tracing. Uh, but we are trying to make it so that ci- city services are back to full interpretation. You heard, uh, the president talk about the interpretation, and I need to work with the city solicitor in terms of working whoever we hire. There would have to be a legal contract on that. Uh, I'm working with the D P W to try to get Northampton Street, which is in terrible shape, uh, to get a quote as to how much it's gonna cost to at least make it safer. I know they're talking, we got a major project in two thousand and twenty-three, but I have already said that, that two thousand and twenty-three is too far down the road. We need to take care of at least making it safe now. So I'm hoping to get, uh, an estimate and then try to put something together to do that. Uh, you'll see an order in there, what was requested by, uh, uh, Dave Conti from the water department regarding the reservoirs to get better enforcement in terms of dogs, fishing and other things. We've been able to give citations, but the citations, if they're not given by the Hoyoke Police Department, uh, are un- uh, unable to be collected. So we have an order in there to try to make, that'll go to ordinance and try to make sure that we can improve enforcement and get people from. And, and it's interesting, I've seen some of the citations, most of the citations are from people that are not from Hoyoke. So they're coming to our reservoirs and, uh, and disobeying their, this, the safety of the water. Uh, a couple of last things, the personnel director will be doing the last interviews this Friday, and I'm hoping we will have someone at least agreeing to select it or to be appointed to that post next week and then hopefully starting very soon after that. And lastly, we'll be conducting, uh, all the restaurants in the city have been invited to a, a listening session where myself and Aaron Vega will be in the ballroom. Um, sometime, I think it's next Tuesday, don't quote me on that, but, uh, you know, to try to find out their concerns and what we can do to maybe give them a better chance to recover financially, get their business back to normal. So those are some of the things that we've been working on and, uh, you know, I appreciate, uh, all the support we got. And I also wanna thank, uh, you'll see an order in there regarding a dog daycare kennel. And I wanna thank, uh, our city clerk, our health director, our animal service director, our, uh, planning director and, and, and John Digest as well, they all came through. We, we were trying to figure out how to do this, we come, came through with a process that we think protects the neighborhood, but also gives us a chance to, uh, encourage this business. And, and it was, we were going through it for a while, and Brenna can attest to that, but I think we've got a good process. And hopefully, it, the council will have their, your input and the neighbors will have their input before we decide. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor, Acting Mayor Murphy. With that, we'll move on to reports of committee, we have ordinance, uh, eighteen A, committee on ordinances referred, a special permit application for. Uh, eighteen A command ordinance was referred, a special permit application for North, uh. Country Pro- uh, Productions LLC Marijuana Manufacturing. Recommended that adopted with the following conditions, that the owners of billing always pay commercial. Property taxes to the extent allowed by federal, state, local laws for the duration of the special permit. Two, the business retain a minimum of thirty percent Hoyok residents for non-security jobs. Three, the hiring preference be given to security personnel that are retired Hoyok officers or are retired members. Another police officer now. Lives in the city of Hoyok. Four, that there shall be no marijuana consumption allowed on the site. Five, there should be no deliveries or retail medical marijuana from the site to individual homes, residents or people. And six, that hours of operations be set according to city ordinances. So it was recommended that be adopted under discussion. Counselor Lisi.
Uh, thank you. Receive the committee report and adopt.
Motion is to receive, adopt.
Um, pass the first reading.
And pass the first reading, Counselor. For yours.
Thank you. Um, so I was unable to attend this meeting. Um, I would, uh, d- defer to Counselor Anderson Burgos who, um, wound up chairing that meeting. And I just want to note that what, what I do understand here is that, um. Because there are, you know, we were in the process of changing the ordinances, that item number six as a, a condition. Um, is probably better language to be using from here on out. Um, that the hours of operation be set according to the ordinances. Um, that way, you know, it, it can adopt and adapt over time. Um, based on the changes that we make to the ordinances as opposed to a specific condition that carves out a, um, specific timeframe to work or not to work. Um, but the, um, committee. Uh, approved it. Any of the other details about the project, again, I would defer to, um, either. The, uh, vice chair, Counselor Anderson Burgos or other members of the committee.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Mister President.
Counselor Bacon, you have a, Counselor Bacon?
Yes, I, I would just like to make a clarification on item six. Um, in the ordinance that we passed tonight, we have made it possible that there could be twenty-four hour operations. But the language is may. And so if the hours are going to be that. That's something that should be specifically spelled out as part of the special permit process. Thank you.
So are we changing six? Is that what we're looking to do?
Well, if, if it's the intention of the applicant to have twenty-four operation, it should be. Put from committee to the council in that language stating that. If that's what they're seeking, is my point. Thank you.
I, but I guess my question is, did they seek that in the meeting or that wasn't really discussed?
I defer to the chair of that meeting.
Counselor Anderson Burgos right there.
He doesn't seem to be with us at the moment. Um, the, the other thing that I'll say is that, um, I think the, the. Again, we have, we have just changed the hours of operation to twenty-four hours for manufacturing alone. This is a, a manufacturing enterprise. And I think the, the, the hours of operation are going to be. Set according to the ordinances, meaning they're going to be twenty-four hours unless it's conditioned. Otherwise, so it's incumbent upon this body to limit. The hours in some way, shape or form, based on the, the feedback that we're getting from the public during the public hearing process. And if there is none, then they, they should remain, um, uh, you know, with, with access to the full hours of, um. Operations set by the city ordinances.
Through the chair, if I may.
Counselor Bacon.
So the point I'm making is that when we undertook this and when we had the meetings and when we made the recommendation to the city council. We did not have that ordinance. Thank you.
Correct. So with that, seeing how there is that slight nuance, what is the will of the group? In the sense of this special permit in that last condition. Do you want to amend it to make it twenty-four or the option of twenty-four or?
Uh, President McGee.
Yeah, Counselor Lisi.
Okay, so I want to, want to make sure them getting across clearly here is that. This language is appropriate because it accounts for a change such as. The one that just took place tonight. So whether we change the, the hours of operation tomorrow or the day after or the year after. The, the, the condition here says that they're always in compliance with the city ordinances. Now, if we want to create a special limitation, again, based on public comment, public feedback. We have the ability to do that with the conditions, but. Um, the, the way that the language is written here, it gives a full access to the, the full set of hours. Set by the city ordinances, whatever they may be. And we prefer it this way in the same way that we're always looking to create legal language that refers to. MGL. So if MGL, you know, changes. You know, we don't have to change our local ordinances to reflect those changes. We just say reference MGL. So I think it's fine the way that it is, uh, unless there was some reason that you heard in the, the. Public hearing to limit them in some way, shape or form.
No, that was my question. I didn't hear anything from the public hearing with regards to that. So anyone further? Motion was to pass the first reading, if I remember. Is that correct? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Motion to pass second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call it off. If you vote yes, you're voting for this special permit.
Mister President.
Uh, Ca- Counselor Bacon.
A point of information before we do the roll call.
Yep.
So the point that I want to make is that at the time of the public. Meetings relative to this special permit, we did not have an ordinance. Allowing twenty-four hour operation. And so it would not have come up under discussion. If someone had an objection to a twenty-four hour operation. That is the point that I was making in the first instant. Now, I was the ninth vote to approve this tonight. And one of the things I was careful about is that it said may. So that does not make it a default twenty-four hour operation. In my view, that is a point that I was careful about in committee. Now, I don't know if there's any objection to the twenty-four hour and if there isn't, then I would have no objection to it. But you cannot retroactively pass a law and then apply it to something. That did not exist during a public process, which nobody would have the ability to object to. So that is the point that I'm making. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So back to patches be ordained. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit.
Anderson Burgos? Bartley?
Yes.
Rainey?
No.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Amber, you're on mute.
Lisi?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Leahy just said something. If you want to confirm, Counselor Leahy?
I'm sorry, yea.
Yea, okay. Thank you.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Um, I am so sorry, guys. I am very, very sorry. I had to take care of a personal matter. Um. What are we voting on before I say yes or no?
We are on eighteen A, which is a special permit for the marijuana at.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, one nay.
Eleven, it, one that is passing eighteen B, command ordinance was referred nor that the city of Hoyok. Uh, ordained a no left turn sign into the former Kmart Plaza from Whiting, uh. Whiting Farms Road recommended that it be adopted. What should be received, adopt and approved under discussion.
First reading.
Pass the first reading or discussion, Counselor Lisi.
Uh, so I think that is pretty straightforward. Um, it, there was a sign, but there was no underlying ordinance. Um, the language before you is going to, um, back up the signage with the ordinances. Um, I don't know if the maker or the chair want to add anything to that.
Anyone? Nope. Okay, see, see none. So mass is pass the first reading. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion that passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for that change. You're on mute. Uh, clerk, you're on mute. Brenna.
Sorry, Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you're approved eighteen B. Off to finance, Counselor McGivern. Do you want to package some of these that are being adopted?
We can take item number five, kind of stands alone first. And then we'll package some.
What, wh- which one?
I'm sorry, uh.
You said, you said five.
I know. Nineteen A is, is on its own.
Taking up nineteen A or AKA five. Um, the community on finance was referred, uh, nor. Order at the McKenzie Stadium lease between the city of Hoyok and the Parker Recreation Department. The cushion of the Valley Blue Sox Foundation recommend that be adopted. Uh, discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mister President. Uh, this is the identical lease that was given in two thousand nineteen. To a wonderful organization known as the Valley Blue Sox. Twenty-two game schedule. And if any recent history tells us, there'll be some playoff games on top of the twenty-two games. Money's used to pay the gas and electric bill and for other expenses that the city, uh, has with the, with the field itself. The, uh, committee, uh, voted four to nothing in favor of, uh, confirming the, the lease. And welcome home, Valley Blue Sox.
Yeah, didn't they win it two years ago or three years ago?
I think. They won it two years in a row. Two years in a row.
Alright, so motion is to receive, adopt. Uh, and approve the lease. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the lease agreement.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Read your vote, you're approved. Read your vote, you're approved nineteen A. Counselor McGivern.
Motion to suspend the rolls and take nineteen B, nineteen C and nineteen D as a package.
Motion to suspend rules, take up B, C and D. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? B is community on finance at a new junk dealer license at two Harrison Ave. C is the Echo ATM at twenty-two sixty-one North Hampton Street. And D is another one at two fifty West Hill Road, recommended that it be adapted. Our discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mister President. Item one is, we met with Luis Nieves. It's a junk dealer's, uh, business, uh, removal license. Uh, his residential address is two Harrison, but he doesn't work out of the home. His work is going to individuals, you know, uh, private property. And removing junk and removing it immediately and disposing of it accordingly and appropriately. The, uh, committee voted four nothing to, uh, to adapt. The, uh, items two and three are the, uh, are the same company. And, uh, we learned that the ECO ATM is a company that takes, uh. Uh, discarded or, or used, uh, cell phones and recycles them. It's, it's an interesting process. They, uh, they have, already have one of these, uh, sites located within the city and these will be two new sites. And, uh, the committee was, uh, after vetting our questions, the committee was in favor for both of these licenses four to nothing. Uh, because they are secondhand, we did talk to them. They do keep an inventory and they do take a. Picture license of anybody that's selling something to them. And before they sell it, they hold it and they do keep an inventory if Hoyok Police Department needs to check the inventory for any stolen property. Committee voted in favor of all three.
The other one is up at the Hoyok Mall outside of JCPenney. I remember taking up way back. Counselor Bartley, you're up first.
Yes, uh, just regard to nineteen B. I, I, I want to offer an amendment to this that, um, and I'll explain myself in a second, as soon as I get a second. Is that, uh, no commercial. Activity shall be conducted on site. You, discussion.
Yep.
So I did have, I did have a chance to speak to the petitioner, uh, Mr. Nieves, uh. He, 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 he sounds, and I, I meant to meet him multiple times, but I, it was my fault. I couldn't, I couldn't get there, but. Uh, he's, he's a, he's a real gentleman and he really wants to, uh, work on that site, but. You know, that, a- and, and he, and he doesn't want to do commercial activity on, on, on the site either. So, so that, that's been, that's been established. Uh, furthermore, the, the, uh, i- i- if, if there were to be commercial activity, that would be contrary to his lease. The, the, the landlord is Valley Opportunity Council. Uh, that's, um. Uh, Steve, um, why am I blanking his last name? But I'm just blanking it. Uh, so. Uh, Steve Huntley apologized. So Steve and I was conf- conferring. I did confer with Mr. Nieves multiple times. He doesn't want to do this, but. Out of an abundance of caution, because it is a license. I, I, I want to just make sure that the appropriate language, no commercial activity. So we, we don't have any misunderstanding going forward. Uh, with this. Um, otherwise, the, the applicant is, sounds like he's gonna have a, make a real. Good forwa- foray into a new business and, and, and I wish him, I, I told him I wished him all the best.
Alright, uh, Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yes, the President, um. I, I'm not feeling well all of a sudden and I just wanted to excuse myself. I, I, I'm trying, I was trying to hold on, but I really can't. And I hope that's okay with you all. I'm so sorry. I just, I. Something did not sit right.
No, I understand. Well, be, go get some rest and hope you feel better.
Yeah, feel better.
Alright, so count, so Counselor McGivern?
Thank you. Um, I think Counselor Bartley hit it. We did talk to Mr. Nieves about if he were to operate on the site. It actually would require a special permit for, uh, for a home occupation, which is as, as Counselor Bartley said. Is not what Mr. Nieves wants. I think in the spirit of what we're doing here, you know, the, the amendment to, to make it part of our motion. Is correct because we're not giving permission to work on, on residential property by issuing a license. Licenses are not special permits. Licenses, uh, we can't really amend, but we can send a strong message that we're not giving. A license for residential property. All the commercial activity has to be off the property.
Alright, so the motion was to amend and say no commercial work slash activity on the site. Did I get that correct?
Yes.
There you go, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So that was nineteen B. Anything with nineteen C or D? No, so motion.
Prove all is, is, uh, as amended.
Motion to approve all of them with the amendment to nineteen B. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for all three. As the one amendment to. As well.
Bartley?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
Read your vote, you're approved. All three. On to. E, which is the city, uh, community on finance referred. An order at the loan order for the city council from March second and approved by the mayor on March ninth. With regards to borrowing one point two one six five hundred thousand for the purchase of DPW and fire, uh, vehicles. Amended to adding the purchase of a front end loader, recommended that be adopted. Motion to be received and adopt in our discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Second, pass the first reading.
And the pass the first reading.
Thank you, Mister President. Uh, Mike McManus came in. This, uh, original bond request was before us, not that long ago. I think we, it's still fresh in our minds. Uh, we, we worked on Mr. McManus on the fleet, the conditions of the fleet. And part of his proposal, when he went out to, when he went out to the actual bid. The, uh, recycling trucks came in under what he was anticipating with some savings. He wants to use that savings. And to, uh, invest into a, a front, uh. Front end loader, I think if I got it correct. And, uh, the front end loader, he has two now, but he just wants to invent and invest into a new one. The two that he have are, are, are very old. Uh, one's a nineteen eighty-four. And, uh, and the other one is a, I'm sorry, the other one is, I think is even older. I even put it down on date. But, uh, Mr. McManus followed the rules. Uh, he knew that he could have just decided to spend the money or to borrow the money and spend it. Without coming back to. he knew that he could have just decided to spend the money or to borrow the money and spend it without coming back to us, and the committee voted four to nothing to approve his, uh, amendment to the bond.
Seeing no one else, motion is received, adopt, pass first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading, the clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for nineteen E.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy? Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Ten A's.
Read your vote, you approved that one, nineteen F, any more packages, Councilor McGivern, or just go straight down?
Not yet, in a little bit.
Alright, nineteen F, uh, committee on finance was referred in order that one thousand four hundred and three dollars from senior planner to Connecticut River Channel marker, recommended that be adopted, motion of
Receive, pass the first reading.
Receive addition, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, we had, uh, first Aaron Vega in, who is the, uh, department head of the, uh, where the senior planner line item comes from, being the, the planning department itself. Uh, Aaron just pointed out that the, uh, the position was, was vacant for prior to the year, that therefore a surplus exists in that line item. Uh, we also had Yoni, our conservation, uh, director in, in Aaron, and, uh, Yoni gave us a presentation of what the river channel markers mean, uh, both to the city of Hoyok, but to anybody who utilizes the river, uh, whether it's boating, uh, the rows, the rowers out of, uh, Jones Ferry or the boating is both above and below the dam itself. Um, each community pays for, uh, part of the, uh, the keeping of these markers. Uh, they're important for public safety, we had Chief Escapowski with us who cited because fire departments do have a, have a state or have a responsibility as far as public safety goes when it comes to river, um, riverway accidents, and he was in favor of the markers, he says they're important for a number of different reasons. We have some great questions that were asked by city councilors, I'll, I'll leave them to the city councilors, but um, talk about, you know, South Hadley and, uh, Northampton both have, uh, huge marinas and, uh, boats that they get, they get excise tax from. And where we have our two access, very, and I think Counselor Leahy pointed out, of our eleven miles, our only access is Jones Ferry and the, uh, canoe club, uh, which I think has got maybe a dozen slots for, uh, for boats. But anyways, the, the importance of this, we thought was public safety, and we voted in favor of, uh, transferring the money.
Seeing no one else, motion is pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading, clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer for nineteen F.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Lacy? Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Nope.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Nine A's, one A.
Read your vote, you approved that one, nineteen G, committee on finance was referred an order of six hundred and eight nine dollars from aide to mayor to city solicitor, recommend that be adopted, motion is receive, adopt, pass first reading, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, we, uh, both Mayor Murphy and, uh, our auditor, Tanya Dolcek, was before us. The, uh, the aide to mayor has a surplus because of a vacancy in that position for a while. The, uh, the money is being transferred into the city solicitor's line item, which will cover, uh, free pay, part of the three pay periods for our new, uh, acting city solicitor lease of all. Committee recommends it on a four to nothing vote to adopt the transfer.
Motion is a pass first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for nineteen G for the transfer.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Lacy? Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Ten A's.
Read your vote, you approved the transfer, nineteen H, committee on finance referred an order of twenty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars from court to various line items, recommend that be adopted, motion is receive, adopt, pass first reading, our discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, we had Lieutenant Hart and, uh, Captain Pratt before us. Uh, similar to what the fire department did at a couple of meetings ago. In reference to the, the outside auditors and DLS telling us that we have deficits in our management of grants, the, uh, police department didn't want to be, uh, shown up by the fire department, and this transfer is coming from court time. Court time has a surplus because there have been no jury trials since COVID started. There have been some motions and some court, court activity for police officers to testify in, but it's dramatically down in the court system. They're taking the surplus money and transferring it, you can see some of these items go back two, three and, uh, two or three, uh, fiscal years themselves for grants that have difference, we went through them one by one, but each of them had a deficit for different reasons. Uh, some of it was just missed postings of a, a grant that's recycled every year, some of it is just, uh, simple clerical mistakes in money that was spent that shouldn't have been, or putting the money back in to make them whole. The committee thanked the, uh, the officers for their, their efforts and, uh, our auditor was still with us and she appreciated this, uh, this, this step towards, uh, making the, uh, our deficits whole again for, uh, hopefully for, uh, the end of June this year, we're gonna see a big difference in free cash.
Motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy? Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Ten A's.
Read your vote, you approved the transfer.
Mr. President, if we could suspend the rules and take nineteen J, nineteen, uh, I'm sorry, nineteen I, nineteen J, nineteen K, and nineteen L as a package, the recommendations that are complied with, and we could probably vote on them as a package.
Alright, motion to suspend rules, take up I, J, K, and L, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, I is, uh, the DPW superintendent provide the city council an inventory list of all DPW vehicles, that's complied with. J is at the, uh, city council, meet with the superintendent, DPW superintendent, discuss bonding for replacement vehicles, complied with. K is at the water department, working in conjunction with environmental police, submit a report to the city council utilizing fines for dogs in the city's reservoirs, fish reservoirs, uh, recommends complied with. Uh, L is that the, uh, city council encourages the mayor to appropriate percentage of yearly interest from the stabilization account to support such projects around the city like, uh, West Glen, Woods Ave, so on and so forth, recommend that be complied with. So motion is receive, adopt, uh, committee ports that they're complied with, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, real quickly, but we'll certainly answer any questions on item number nineteen I. I believe it was Counselor Grainey's order, but a couple of people had signed on to it, over the process of the bonding, over the process of a list that was provided by Mike McManus, we feel we have a good handle on the status of the fleet of the DPW. Uh, Counselor Grainey did point out and made some excellent questions about some, um, I always say it wrong, Humbees that are being used by the DPW and, uh, whether they're worth the expense to operate them. Nineteen J is the, uh, the bonding for the replacement the superintendent committed to discuss about the bonding for the replacement vehicles. Obviously, we've done that same thing with the discussions over the bonding and the efforts of, uh, Counselor Murphy, Mayor Murphy, and, and the, uh, committee itself. Nineteen K is the, uh, Counselor Leahy's order, uh, Counselor Leahy was on vacation last week, but we did take it up and we did, uh, get a promise that there's a, a report that was provided, but more important, an annual report that's coming up and that it'll be more detailed in terms of, uh, working with the environmental police. And we heard, uh, Mayor Murphy talk earlier tonight about doing something to us to, uh, enhance the ability for fines to be, uh, collected through the court, court system when necessary. And nineteen twelve, nineteen twelve was in Ward, a lot of it's in Ward three, but it's, I'm sorry, Ward three, Ward five, and I think part of Ward six. And that that order also has been complied with in terms of the, uh, the money that is being spent on projects, uh, somewhere. West Glen's been a long time coming, and I know the, uh, neighborhood there is gonna be appreciative, uh, that work can get done in sometime short, sometime in the near future.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just real quick, uh, in terms of the, uh, the reservoirs, and, and I did file it and, and, uh, Superintendent Conti, but I, this was also kind of important. The environmental police, while they can go out and give citations, they can't find somebody. So, I mean, I, the order is that we're gonna put in at the water commission's request, uh, is going to allow them to actually find, state police could come in and find in Hoyok Police, so there will be an opportunity for us to have enforcement, and again, almost everybody that got cited was not from Hoyok, so.
So seeing no one further, motion at D is having, uh, Counsel, Counselor Grainey?
Just quickly on, uh, on, uh, on nineteen I, the order I filed, I will have some, uh, some future questions on that, like where all these vehicles are housed, the maintenance, uh, of these vehicles, which vehicles are taken home after hours by employees and are used for twenty-four hour vehicles, so that's for a future date, but, uh, I want to keep that, uh, discussion alive, thank you.
Okay. So these have been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? On to twenty A, which is public safety. Committee on public safety was referred that the city council approve a resolution in opposition to the state's biomass plant, uh, for the east, uh, East Springfield, recommend it's been, uh, recommend that be adopted. Our discussion, Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, it, we had, we had done this one time, we had sent it before the council, and at that point, it looked like the, uh, the biomass plant was not going to be approved, they have appealed it and based on the health, environmental concerns that have been expressed, certainly by our health director in terms of the impact of the airflow coming into the lower wards where we have a significant asthma and health issues. Uh, just from the health standpoint, i- i- we just feel that it is certainly not in the best interest of Hoyok. Uh, and it's within a six mile radius and, and it would have a negative impact by all accounts on our air quality.
From anyone? Further? So motion is to receive and adopt the, um,
Resolution.
The resolution as drafted, everyone should have a copy of this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So it'd be passed, that's twenty A. Twenty B is public safety was for northern council work with the city solicitor, police chief, state legislative delegation, if needed to put in place significant penalties for dirt bikers and other engaging publics, uh, public streets, recommend it be complied with, Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, and we met with Captain Pratt and, uh, and they're working with the state police, uh, it's kind of a, a difficult issue, we need to try to find ways where we know they're coming and try to have some way of deterring them from coming. Uh, I know the state police have a helicopter that have been working with our police to try to know when they're coming and try to give us some advance notice, it does appear they come off the high three ninety-one primarily, from what I gather. Uh, so, the one other issue is, we, we, you know, we'll try to cite as much as we can without getting into a high-speed chase, obviously, they can go places where cruisers aren't gonna want to go for safety reasons, so we are trying to figure out, can we do road, you know, how, some kind of roadblock where we know they're coming, we, we haven't worked that out yet, but we are aware of the problem. It, they're very blatant, uh, they're very lacking, lacking of concern for anyone else other than their, their want to have some kind of daredevil part of their life. And it's a danger, so we'll continue to work with the police and try to find answers. And, uh, you know, I, if need be, I, again, would talk to our state delegation, if if there's a way that we can confiscate bikes that are not uh, allowed on, on streets and or if people are doing things illegally that we might be able to do that, I know Springfield has done some impounding, and maybe we can do some of that as well.
So motion that's been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Do you want to take up C, D, and G as a package, they're all also complied with and give a report?
Yep, that would be fine.
So take up as package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So C is inviting in Jim Lovell and HG&E reps to discuss Valley Heights, which is what we did tonight, but the other two are what's more important, that's just complied with. D is that the, uh, disabilities commission, uh, consider creating a new sign, um, for example, slow autistic child is not appropriate in a new sign, that's been complied with. Twenty G is that the public safety committee, uh, refer in order to parking on Route two O two near the Appalachian Trail and removing trail signs if need be, that's been complied with. Uh, our discussion, Counselor Murphy?
So, and, and the first tw- twenty C, obviously, we, we, we got enough information on that to let that one be complied with for sure. Twenty G, uh, I believe the signage went up, the signage basically said autistic person area. Uh, I, and I believe the signage went up just prior to our meeting, so that, that, I think, uh, tried to resolve that issue, and we may still try to find language that makes more sense, and I think it's, it's certainly something we should be considering. Uh, twenty G, uh, we were certainly trying to find a way to resolve it, the, the conservation director is trying to work to get signage that gets people to the trails without having people park there. Uh, we also may have to look at doing some no parking on, on two O two to try to make sure people are not going there. Uh, the water department definitely wants to make sure that people are not going on water department land, so, and, and, and that water supply up there that is, they're trying to break through, they protect, so I know I know I met with, uh, the conservation director, and he has tried to work and tried to reach out to some of the people that do the trails to see if they would be willing to offer some suggestions as well.
Alright, Counselor Bartley, and then Counselor McGivern?
Thank you. Hold on, man, Mr. President, I, I, I look forward to going back to city council chambers because, uh, I, I just I'm, I'm like doing work here, and I shouldn't be doing work, but I, I can't help it, so, uh, alright, uh, just on twenty D, uh, I, I really appreciate, uh, the work that was done on this, I, I just want to make a small comment if I may, Mr. President. This, this initiated with a, a constituent call who has never once called me in my nine and a half years on the board, and, uh, though her husband has on, on other occasions, but, but she never has, I met her for the first time, she was very concerned because she has an adult child, uh, that's gonna be living with her for, for, you know, the rest of her, her life, and, um, and she was, as, as Yoda read, you know, the adult child is, um, I forgot the age, but she's, she's over thirty at, at any rate, so uh, she's, she's no, she, she, the, the adult is, is, is no longer a child, so, so the, the, the sign she felt was, um, uh, I mean, I want to put words in her mouth, but, uh, it just, just inappropriate, and, and, and really, it's something I would have never thought of on, on my own, and I'm so grateful that this constituent of South Street brought this to my attention, I know she's posted things on Facebook, um, which I, I rarely ever look at, though, uh, but I get them sent to me, so I looked at it this time, and she was very appreciative of the public works department and, uh, appreciative of the, of the small effort that we made, and I just want to say as a, as a general rule, I think that when we as counselors get this opportunity to make a, e- even a, even a small difference, it may seem small to us, but it was a big difference to this particular constituent, and it really makes, in my opinion, uh, quite often, doesn't make all the nonsense go away, but it makes a lot of the nonsense, uh, seem worthwhile, because when, when you can actually help somebody uh, in this case, uh, you know, we're, we're not taking a bow, right, we're, we're, we're just acknowledging the fact that, that, uh, you know, being a lowly city counselor can can actually m- make a small difference, and, and I, I think that's worth noting, thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to thank Counselor Bacon for this order. I've driven by the Evermont Highway a couple of times, and I thought these cars I've seen here before were there as part of the reservoirs, but she pointed out to us as part of the, uh, it is not the Appalachian Trail, it's the New England Trail or something like that one, I think. These days, I couldn't tell you the difference. But we had a good conversation and, and talked about, if you do look at a lot of trails, they have to cross busy streets like this, but we should not make this an ad, or we should ask the powers to be not to let this But we should not make this an ad, or we should ask the powers to be not to let this be a known access point. And hopefully make it more safer for people crossing and try to get, you know, maybe a designated parking in different places. Whether it's a city or a neighboring town somewhere, you know, for people to get on and off the trail itself. But the uh the as Counselor Bacon always points out, the the uh the safety of Route two oh two has got to come first, and. Whether you're parking there or whether you're driving by there, it's just too much of a safety hazard when we got people parked and trying to uh cross.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um I just wanted to note the correction that it should have said the New England Trail. I meant to. Correct that before I submitted it, but I had not. Um because that is our a unique trail. Um I appreciate the committee taking this up. Um I've trusted to leave it in the hands of our Conservation Director to coordinate with the volunteers relative to the trail. And uh we'll see how this all works out. Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, thank you. I I think that was it was a great order by Counselor Bacon, and uh I sat in on that meeting and a very good discussion. I went on for about a half hour or so and and what we can do to to make that area safer and uh. Counselor Bartley, that was a great uh sign. They did a great job with the DPW, and uh. We're not lowly counselors. You made a difference, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone further? Motion that these have been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There was no, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Do we do twenty E and twenty F as a package? I'll explain.
We did them, didn't we?
Well, we I just when when you took your little break before, I don't think I announced the public hearing was for twenty E and twenty F when we when we continued it. I just want to make it clear to anybody listening.
Okay, yeah, no, it makes sense. So twenty E and twenty F. We did suspend the rules and take it up earlier, but just to confirm that. We are continuing it. Twenty E was the gas electric poles for thirty-six and thirty-nine Valley Heights. And then twenty F was for a series of uh changes on Valley Heights. Those were was a motion to continue the public hearing until June first.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's E and F. All right. There was no DG and R, there's no charter rules, there's no joint committees, so we're on to motion orders and resolutions.
President, can we take uh twenty-five, suspend, take twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four as a package? And uh abbreviated reading and ship them all to DGR, please.
That might be a record, Mr. President.
Motion suspend the rules, take up twenty-five to thirty-four.
Yeah.
And Counselor Bartley said to read them in depth, just kidding, no. So twenty-five is for twelve Main Street um. Declare surplus. Twenty-six is twenty-two Main Street to declare surplus. Twenty-seven is to declare surplus on High Street identified by MAP and Parcel. Twenty-eight is to declare surplus, another piece of property on High Street by MAP and Parcel. Uh twenty-nine is three ninety-four High Street uh declare surplus. Thirty is four hundred High Street, declare surplus. Thirty-one is five eighty-eight High Street, declare surplus. Thirty-two is two ninety-seven Elm Street to declare surplus. Thirty-four is three oh one Elm Street, declare surplus. And thirty-four is to two ninety-seven Elm Street, declare surplus. All those twenty-five to thirty-four to DG and R.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-five from Counselor Bartley.
Oh, we did that.
But thirty-five, sorry?
Yeah, all set.
Thirty-five. Thank you. Counselor thirty-six is from Counselor Lacy. The city council invite in Jim Lovell, H G and E, and any commissioners appropriate for an update on the. Nature and impact of the natural gas mortarium in Hoyoke and discuss opportunities available and assuring that we have natural gas capacity. That does need to grow.
Receive, send to DGR for discussion.
To DG and R, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-seven from Counsel Lacy at the city council review the fire department plan, review fees for uh fire alarm systems.
Receive and send to ordinance.
Send to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thirty-eight.
Motion to suspend the rules, if I could, Mr. President, to take up thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty-one as a package, refer to committee on finance.
Second.
Second.
Right, can, Mr.
Uh hold on one second, let me just go through the motions here. Motion is suspend the rules, take up thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-one, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh thirty-eight.
Reading?
Yep, is seven million four hundred seventy-one thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars for a purpose of. The it's the schools, it's bonding for the schools, which would be uh Sullivan, Dunnehue, Ian White uh for roofs and everything else. Thirty-nine is from Council McGivern, one million three hundred fifty-one thousand two hundred fifty-four. Uh one forty-five Brown Street, Dwight Street, a series of streets here. Uh and then forty-one is.
Demolition.
Demolition, yep. And forty-one. Is fifty thousand from salary study, uh library assistant, so on, to police, fire, indemnification, and workers' comp. Under discussion, Counsel McGivern, all these to finance, you said?
Finance, please.
And Counselor Murphy had a question. Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, I I just uh I would like item thirty-nine, we I've had some different news. I got the seven properties from the problem property group in terms of. Recommending for demolition, however, uh as I was getting ready to call press conference, I was told that sixteen Commercial. Had just been moved and uh. And so uh it had just been sold, and so I I want to pull this out and return it back to the auditor so that I can go back to the problem property group. Uh I I've got some information about the per- the company that wants to come there at at Commercial Street, so I want to pull this bond back. I do want to get demolition done, but I want to make sure that we uh don't do something that. We have someone that seems to want to make an investment in, so even though it's in terrible shape and the fire chief was like, he was happy to see it out there, but uh right now. Uh it's been just sold, so I want to make sure we pull that off and uh revisit what properties we will do in demolition.
All right.
President, I amend my motion to have thirty-eight and forty-one go to finance, and then we can act on thirty-nine separately and return to the uh.
I'll second that.
Auditor.
All right, so thirty-eight is the schools, forty-one is the fifty thousand to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-nine, well, hold on, Counselor Bartley had a question.
Yeah, no, just just a comment. Uh I I appreciate Counselor Murphy. Uh I I I was certainly one of the ones that advised uh Acting Mayor Counselor Murphy uh about this because it's. It was a a colleague of mine that 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 sold the sold the property, so that was the uh. I I saw the press release on the on where the announcement was going to be at sixteen Commercial, I sent it to the Realtor. And then with about thirty minutes of, because the the press conference was going to be at sixteen Commercial, within thirty minutes, the uh press conference got canceled. Um and that that would have been an embarrassment for the for the city, because here here we have is a private party purchasing. Sixteen Commercial, and my understanding is that there might be another private property purchasing one forty-five Brown. I mean, that's no slight on the mayor or acting mayor. I'm not, I'm just. Pointing out that that um that when the acting mayor was made aware of it, he 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 quickly acted, and so he should be should be credited for for that. And I also appreciate the fact that we're 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 trying to. You know, trying to clean up some property, you you know, Mr. President, you you saw by all the orders, all the surplus property orders that I filed on behalf of Oped. I mean, tho- those those just didn't come up last week, Mr. President. They didn't come up last year, Mr. President. They've been sitting there for a decade, Mr. President. So I mean, I just asked the council to think about that, just for just for a little while. Just consider why they were sitting there for a decade. And and why these properties have been sitting there and that this 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 deteriorated state, but I'll say no more. Thank you.
So thirty-nine is to refer, oh, Counselor Granny.
Just on thirty-nine, can we just pull sixteen Commercial Street out of there and leave the rest in there?
We have to refile it, so. So send it back to the auditor.
Yes.
All right, so motion is take thirty-nine, send back to the auditor, and then Acting Mayor Murphy will follow up with a new one. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty. And all right, forty is from Counselor McGivern. That fourteen thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars and seven cents from lieutenants, patrolmen, and sergeants injured on duty. Motion be received, adopt, pass first reading. Our discussion, Counselor McGivern.
President, this is our uh every meeting uh accounting movement. Which allows us to take salaries for someone who gets a salary, however, to bring it out of when they're injured on duty, which may be very temporary. And put it into a different line item for accounting of uh services itself. Motion that we had passed the first reading and and uh second reading to adopt.
Motion is pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, the clerk will call a roll. Vote yes, you're voting for the transfer. It's also as an update, one, two, three, four, five people. Oh, Counselor Bartley, into your hand.
Yeah, just just a point of information. I I I I see HPD, but I don't see HFD on here.
That's all we have for now is just this one.
I I get it. I I get it. So uh I'm just I'm pointing that out um and just just point out again, just a reminder, so we we just get just a friendly reminder. That when when officers are on I L D, the paycheck is, as Counselor Sullivan, his research points out to us, the paycheck uh is. Not taxed, so there's no federal, there's no state, there's no nada. It's uh it's just a a it's just a check to the uh to the party. Thank you.
So here to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading, the clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for that transfer. Bartley?
Yes.
Granny?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Leahy? Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. With your vote, you're approved. Forty. Forty-one was done. Forty-two is from Counselor Murphy, order that the joint committee. For school and city council meet to discuss potential transferring school property on Dean Campus at the intersection of St. Vincent's and Northampton Street. For potential purpose of construction uh some homes and making streets and sidewalks safer, that would be to the joint committee.
Committee, but I believe Counselor Bartley wants to co-sign, and I would welcome that.
Counselor Bartley.
Uh Mr. Bart, Counselor Bartley does want to co-sign, but I I I just want I just want somebody to make a motion, I then I just want to make a comment.
Motion is to send to the joint committee.
And I'll second that.
And Counselor Bartley adding your name and under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, this is a this is a fantastic order, and uh and I I just, again, this is, and I appreciate what Pete said earlier. Pete, you you know, you you're always a friend. I appreciate your comment, Pete, you know I do. Um and then uh but thi- this is another one. This is another one where um early COVID stages, uh Todd, you 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 can't believe what I what I saw. When I was coming up St. Vincent, taking the right on Route five, and when I. I I mean, there had have been five hundred. Pieces of plastic just all over the place, and I just I couldn't take it, so I just. I had my recycle bin, and I just I cleaned it up myself, but when we got to thinking, I I talked to the ward two counselor. I said, what is this? I mean, I encourage anybody to drive over there. It's it it looks like very potential developable lots. And so Terry took it to the next step. And and acted upon it a- as as, you know, as a proactive ward counselor. And thi- this is this is fantastic, and so now we've got and and he met and he invited me, and I just my work schedule went a lot. He he met with the city engineer uh two weeks ago on site. Uh a couple of weeks ago, Terry, if I remember, and and then and so here we are now with with seeing if we can get the school board. To 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 go ahead and transfer the property back to the city of Hoyoke and. And only, you know, for the purposes of either RFP-ing them or auctioning them or however you however you do it and working with the acting treasurer. Uh to go ahead and and to make, you know, I'm being honest to me, I didn't I I didn't even think this was actually real, but you you know, it it's, you know, a little idea. A little kernel planted, and then here we go. So so this this is this is a really exciting thing, and and uh. I'm just grateful that we had a we had a small part in it, so thank you for letting me add my name, and that's it.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, I I can recall this coming up a bit a year or two ago, I think, uh and I'd like to be added onto this order too, and I think we did have a report. A while ago from the engineer on this, and um you know, I I know the grading is a little difficult, but um I would love to see something happen there. If it's possible with that that corner, um and I I think it's uh it's could be doable. Um but uh I I want to really thank the efforts of uh my colleagues for for putting this forward and uh. Keep in an area, try to get some uh developable property, tax taxes coming in and and cleaning up a a a tough area of the city. Thank you.
Can I just make one more count? Counselor Murphy.
Just and and I I know when we first met, uh the city engineer was a little doubtful, and and then he came back and he did some more, and he he actually, you know. First, he thought maybe you can get two houses, and and now he's come back thinking there's a good chance you can get three. Uh and we will not have any negative impact on the school. If anything, we'll have a positive impact on the school, because they'll have a better walkway going down. We won't have trees falling over the fences. We won't have trees falling on the Route five highway, so I mean, if we can do this, and there's I'm I'm hoping the school, because I brought it up last night, and I'm hoping they're gonna. Take this up quickly, and then we can uh. Start to move an RFP and and, you know, we'll leave it open. And city engineer would design the the specifications, and and then we'll see what kind of market there is, but. He kind of thought, you know, there could be a market, they're not going to pay us a lot for the land, but once we get the housing there, we got a better better neighborhood than we get to have.
So adding Counselor Bartley and Tomlin, this is going to the joint committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-three is from Counselor Murphy, order that the finance committee consider a potential proposal from viewpoint with Dennis Quaid. Uh including Hoyoke and public television series. Um. So this is going to go to finance. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Murphy.
Uh I I was, I got a call from his producer uh last week asking. Uh I guess they've done a presentation on Whister on on this and in other towns, but basically it is. Great places to live, work, and visit. He asked me about Hoyoke, and we started talking, and then he said. You know, I think we could come to Hoyoke and put a good presentation together, both in terms of economic opportunity, but also in terms of tourism and things along that lines. Uh and, you know, the low cost of energy, the low cost of water, the natural mountain, the river, all that kind of things, plus the history. Uh so there is a cost. Uh it would be uh, you know, the ending, I will take it, but the person who is the producer, uh Counselor McGivern has told me he would definitely like to appear before the finance committee to explain the entire program. And the potential costs and how many viewers they get, and it was a substantial number of viewers. And I thought, based on what I'm hearing, if we got one or two businesses to consider coming to Hoyoke because of it. Our costs would be more than paid for, but uh so I'm I'm it was kind of exciting to have someone talking about, let's come and have a TV show and have it done in Hoyoke, so.
Maybe you brought this up in public safety, and that's why we said file in order to get over here so we can start getting on it, so Counselor Bartley.
No, I yeah, Joe, you want to go first? Joe, you go first. I'll I'll wait.
No, I was just going to chime in, David, to uh to the mayor. I know a couple of people in marketing that can help us out.
Oh, I thought you don't. And and very telegenic, I have to say, the two of them, like, holy, holy.
Better than dad, right?
Oh, and I I you stop it. I I I, you know, they're just just they, well, but we'll just say they take after their mom. We'll we'll leave it there. Uh but but this is this is fantastic news, and and what's it just to the public? What what's this about? This is not about himself. This is about the city. Hallelujah. Thank you.
So this one to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-four is from Counselor Sullivan, Counselor Bartley, Counselor Granny, order that the city council through the arbores uh. At the city of Hoyoke, through the honorable city council, honorable mayor hereby petition the national court to enact legislation establishing a process for recalling elected officials. And the said legislation be entitled, and that it read as follows. So Counselor Sullivan.
Uh first of all, for the record, uh we should have Counselor Bacon's name on here as well.
Adding Counselor Bacon, hold on. All right, go ahead, Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah, um so this is exactly, I think everybody's got a copy, but we've passed this. Yeah, um, so this is exactly, I think everybody's got a copy, but we've passed this twice before, we've sent it to the mayor's office twice before. And it just sat on the desk, so maybe the third time's the charm, uh, I don't see any reason to send it to committee. It's exact, uh, exact wording is what we've passed before, so I'd like to receive and adopt, uh, receive, adopt and pass.
Motion is to receive and adopt, any other discussion?
Do we, do we have a copy of the language, I remember it, but I.
I, I have it here, it's attached.
Well, if we're gonna adopt it, can we read it into the record?
It's, all of this, all of this?
Re-reading, reading, all the time.
Well, I, I mean, if we're being asked to adopt it tonight, it would've been nice to have in advance.
Right.
We've had it three times.
I, I know that, I understand that, but I learned from the law department that we've adopted things where one or two words have changed, has changed the intent of what we thought we were, we adopted, we find out five years later.
So you want me to read every page?
Now we can send it to committee for two weeks.
Motion was received.
Mr. President.
Counsel Bacon.
I'd make a motion to table, so everybody can read it, and we'll take it up at the next meeting.
Okay, motion is to table, is there a second? Under discussion, Counsel Bartley.
A- and I'm not gonna oppose that, but I'm just gonna say, I, I, I am, I am gonna have a DGR on Monday. Uh, I mean, if you want, we can, we can take it up, I, I, we can take it up there, if, if, I mean, Mike's on the committee.
I will.
Motion to send to DGNR?
Well, if my, if the maker wants it, I, I mean, I, you tell me, I, I don't want to make the motion.
And that'll be Monday, what's the date, Counselor?
Mon- uh, Monday, the, the twenty-fourth, Jeff, Monday the twenty-fourth, right?
So twenty-fourth, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Monday, it's twenty-fourth, it'll be taken up at DJNR, is that alright, Counsel Sullivan?
I'd just like to make one other comment, uh, this, this is exactly word for word, period for period, comma for comma, taken right from the city clerk's office from what was filed and sat on the, on the mayor's desk and passed by this council. So if we're gonna send this to committee and do all of this, ju- just to look at an exact same document, of which everybody's got a copy also. That's fine, if that's the will of the body, that they've gotta, that, that they've gotta take something right straight from the clerk's office, word for word, and put it off again, by all means.
I'll support the, the vote.
I'll support the vote.
So you want to vote first, or you want to send to committee, what's?
And the motion.
So the motion was to send it.
The mayor.
Motion was to receive, adopt and send to the mayor. Clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for that adoption. Anderson Burgos, oh, Bartley?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
LeBron March, uh, Leahy? Lisi?
How?
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Holman?
No.
Bacon?
Yes.
Seven yeas, three nays.
Make a motion reconsider refer to committee.
Motion is reconsider refer to DGNR.
Second.
Second.
Favor.
Bye.
Bye. No.
No.
No. Okay, sure, so motion was to send the committee, I don't think there was the yeses for it.
It, it was, it was seven to three, what, what, what was the ruling of the chair?
It's a charter change, so you need nine.
I, I, I didn't hear the rule of the chair, so I, I just, I was confused by that.
No, no, sorry, it, when it said seven, I thought we knew, but that's my fault, so you need nine, so therefore, that's why there was a table, uh, not table, motion reconsider to send to DGNR.
Okay.
President?
Yes, Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, I would just note that this passed unanimously in the past by the city council, and it's the same language that we passed then, but I hear the voice.
Yep, so we'll take it up in DGNR, Counsel Bartley said he'd be very gracious enough to do that on Monday, the twenty-fourth. So I'm gonna have your chance to review it and get back to us.
Almost.
All those in favor? Opposed, I heard all yeas there, alright, my ears are okay. Twenty-five, or, no, twenty-five, I know, forty-five is from Counsel Bacon, the install a street sign for Holy Family Road at the intersection of Lower Westfield Road.
Uh, receive, adopt and refer to DPW, please.
Motion is receive, adopt, refer to DPW, all those in favor.
Alright.
Bye.
Could I make a suggestion that you also give a copy to the mayor?
And give a copy to that, uh, what's his name, oh, yeah, Acting Mayor Murphy?
That guy.
Copy, all those in favor?
Hi.
All opposed, forty-six is from Counsel Bacon, Counsel Bartley, order the.
And I believe Counsel McGivern had indicated he wanted to be on it to the clerk.
Okay, I did, uh, email Irma.
Alright, so I'll add Counsel McGivern. And this is that the sewer rate returned from the city council to the DPW commission, where it had been previously determined.
Refer to finance?
To finance, all those in favor.
Hi.
All those opposed.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I have no problem doing it in finance, but it is, it's in ordinance form, is it?
Is it?
Yeah, I think it is.
Oh, well then.
Send it to ordinance.
Ordinance.
So forty-six should go to ordinance instead, all those in favor.
Alright.
Of those, forty-seven is from Counsel Hernandez, that the handicapped sign be removed from one forty-three Oak Street, that'd be ordinance.
Yep.
All those in favor, alright, all opposed, we do have a few late files, we'll go through them. Mr. President? Yep, yep. Rebecca Lisi has her hand up. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, um, if I could be added to forty-six with the maker's permission, um, I'd like to be included there.
Alright, just adding Counsel Lisi to forty-six. Sure. Alright. A, late file A is from myself, um, order that the city council vote to approve an exemption under master law two sixty-eight A, section twenty B, conflict of interest Patty Devine, uh, as a temporary employee. Uh, it said special employee, because she's doing two, two city jobs, one as a commissioner, and one as a part-time employee, she does part-time work. So Lisa Ball said to do it this way for allowing her to be a commissioner.
What, where does she do the part-time work?
She's a part-time employee, uh, for the city at the clerk's office, uh, helping out with elections and stuff. And then she would be a commissioner, so kind of like when Dave Guzman did softball, or he did football, and then he did the ta- tax collector, we gave it out, that's an example.
Kind of like when our.
Public.
He's the voice of Hoyoke football.
But, yeah, and then Ke- Kevin Jordan has the vo- voice of public football. Public service? Do you want to pass it tonight, or, because we voted her in as commissioner, and I guess they're looking to do payroll?
Well.
I'm just, this came from, I, my, just letting you know, uh, Mike Gas reached out to me, we reached out to Lisa, Lisa said do it this way, that's all, Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, do we, do we have to get something from the State Ethics Commission on this, because I don't, I don't.
It's just like, um, when, um, Kevin did it as the football person and, uh, city counselor. Lisa looked this up, and Lisa said we have to do it this way. That's why I bring up his late file, because Mike called me late Friday to tell me, and then Lisa looked it up and got it to us.
And, and then, and then what, what are the, what, what are the?
Hold on, Counsel Grady, hold on, Counsel Bartley's got the floor.
Yeah, I, I, what, 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 what are the, what's the compensation on, on, on these two, does that, so that's anywhere to be found on, on your records?
I think it was fourth, was it, again, I can't remember what the commissioner was getting, I think it's four thousand a year. And then she was working part-time work, is that, I might be wrong on that one. It's just a snippet.
She's a, she's a part-time clerk in the, in the, in the clerk's office?
Uh, no, she's a temp- temporary employee, she, the clerk is here, she can answer what she does.
Motion allow clerk speak.
All those in favor, all opposed. She's considered a temporary seasonal, so when we have something like, um, city census, or um, different elections thing, she did a lot of, uh, uh, work with the elections this year, um, stuff like that, she'll come in and help, just, you know, a few hours a week, and I think that just pays a little bit over minimum wage, or just minimum wage.
No, I appreciate the work, I'm just wondering if, if there's a way just to avoid doing this, um, but maybe there isn't, so.
Yeah, that's why I, I gave it to Lisa Ball, the solicitor, and this is what she read, Counsel, Counsel Grady was next, then Counsel Lisi.
Yeah, there's precedent that's been set before on an issue like this, so I move that we pass it tonight.
Counsel Lisi.
Thank you, um, the one outstanding question that I have is, in the past, uh, like, a, a, a special employee would have to forego the salary of one or the other positions, they weren't allowed to collect a salary on both. Even though the.
Yeah, go, Lisa Ball looked that up, and there's a, I think there was a, if you're over X number of hours in one position versus another, and she, eight hundred, she's nowhere near that. So that's why, once again, this, Mike reached out to me, I reached out to Lisa, Lisa looked it up, and this is what she told us we had to do.
Okay, so she, she doesn't hit those thresholds?
No.
Okay.
Now, I'll, I'll second Howie's motion.
Alright, so motion would be to spend our rules, take up final action on A, uh, all those in favor.
Alright.
All opposed, and this is to allow, uh, Patty Devine to be in compliance with master law two sixty-eight A, section twenty B. Do we need a roll call for this one, as a temporary employee? So clerk will call the roll with regards to A. Bartley?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy? LeBron, Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. With your vote, you approve that, B is from Counsel Bartley. DPW disability commissioners remove the handicapped sign at seven Russell Terrace, it's vacant, it needs to be moved.
Yeah, thanks for just writing the ordinance.
So two ordinance and a copy of the disability's commission, all those in favor.
Alright.
All opposed, C is from Counsel Murphy, order that the ordinance committee meet with the water department superintendent and commissioners to amend the ordinance restricting activities such as fishing, dog walking, both to, uh, both to increase the fines and authorize the state police environmental as well to ordinance.
Yep.
All, all those in favor?
Hi.
Both, D is from Hoyoke Media, as I, I explained, and Counsel Murphy explained with regards to us having to take up uh, hiring of the interpreters, so we'll send that to uh, we'll just receive it, and then what we'll do is we'll get the list of approved vendors that he has, and we'll get that to you ASAP.
Real quick, if I can.
Uh, Counsel Bartley and Counsel Murphy.
Uh, Terry, go ahead.
Alright.
The goal now is to have it for the first meeting in August, to have, to have an interpreter there at our first meeting in August. Uh, rather than trying to get it all done so quickly and not necessarily know where we're at, so.
Okay.
Uh, we, we've all agreed, well, the people that talk about it have all agreed that it's fragile for the first meeting in August.
Okay, Counsel Bartley.
Yes, uh, ju- this is going back to the president's report, a- and, and the May eighteenth letter from Hoyoke Media. Wherein, it mentioned its attorney from line of his Patrick gave some kind of a, a, an opinion, are, are, are we, are we gonna get a copy of that opinion, and?
Yeah, I, I asked for that. I asked for that from Scott.
O- o- okay, so that, that ought to be a public record, and then, and by the way, um, you know, this body had nothing to do with the formation of Hoyoke Media. Um, it was just kind of an indepe- uh, independent corporation set up by the former mayor. Uh, uh, so I, it's my hope that at some point, whether the acting mayor or the new mayor is gonna, you know, find out, well, i- i- is this, is this the, the best way to, to, to run this railroad, but that's for another day, but, so, but when did it, when did we, just so I'm clear, Mr. President, when, when are we gonna get a copy of the letter, and, and how's that gonna happen now?
I, I talked to Scott yesterday, the day before, can't remember the day, and he's one that brought to my attention that there's a delay because they had a legal issue, and I said, well, I would like an opinion from, uh, the attorney. This is the letter we got, so I'm assuming the opinion's coming, he wanted something for the meeting, I will follow up and get that answered. Hopefully tomorrow, Counsel Bartley.
Maybe Jeff can do that, can, can we make a motion to have Jeff kind of follow up with him, Todd?
Sure, if, if you want to do that, sure, sure.
Well, do you want to just relieve you with a burden of it, so I'll, I'll, I'll make, I'll make the motion.
That's fine, so, so.
Second.
For D, we're gonna have Jeff, uh, reach out to Scott to provide us with the legal opinion as to why they believe there's um, liability, all those in favor?
Alright.
All opposed, Counsel, Counsel Hernandez? You got your hands up?
Yes, I wanted to know a little bit of more information on this, with this Hoyoke Media thing, what is this about?
Hoyoke Media is where you get the money from Comcast coming in, and they took those funds and set up this Hoy- or, the former mayor set up this Hoyoke Media in order to use those funds to provide this type of access and everything else.
Right, and so, what is it that we're trying to find out?
Well, what happened was, uh, in order to get the interpreters in for our full city council, we can use the monies that come into Hoyoke Media to help pay for that, so it doesn't come off, uh, taxpayers' monies, regular taxpayers' money. It only comes from Hoyoke Media through, uh, the rate payer for Comcast, that was approved. And then we all voted to have the interpreters approved, I was in discussions with Scott to then get the interpreters that are used for the school committee, it only made sense, they're doing it there, they can do it over here, and then it went sideways in a sense of, we gotta get back to you, and then when they finally got back to me, this came up as there's now a potential legal issue.
Oh, okay.
So, that's the communication we're receiving today, but we'll try and get their opinion as to what the legal matter is. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, I think we're a little out on a limb debating this on late file, but it's just a reminder, it's, it's not just to pay for the interpreters, that was, uh, the agreement, we also agreed to, uh, the selection of the interpreters would, would have the, uh, the president's approval themselves. I stated, I don't think that the, uh, school interpreters without some input was a good idea politically. I will state, I don't think the mayor appointing the interpreter is a good idea at all. Sorry, Mr. Murphy, but that's just my opinion, because things change quickly, as will in room one. So we, we need to get, you know, quickly as to is, if the city council is, is going to be appointing, what are we appointing, are they gonna be city employees, are we opening up a can of worms, or are they gonna be, uh, you know, part-time consultants? I think we have to get on that quick.
We'll, we'll get more as to who's out there, what vendors, because it's no longer just those from the school.
Yeah, and, and school people are there, but we, he also has other people he can recommend, so.
Correct.
But we need it.
We'll send that to committee, Joe, we'll just receive the letter now, and then we'll send, we'll have that up in committee, Counsel Grady.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that whoever we select, the, these people are, are not politically biased.
No, no, we're, we're, it, it's not my choice alone, I never wanted that ability or responsibility, I will always bring it to the full body as to who we're going to select. So with that, D was to receive the communication, all those in favor? All opposed, and Jeffrey will follow up with getting that legal opinion. E is with regards to what Counsel Murphy pointed out, which is a commercial animal establishment at, um, three, uh, or eight ninety-nine Main Street, so that would go to your, the DGNR, I believe, the special permit, all those in favor?
Hi.
All opposed. F is a zone change, uh, for Gordon Alexander on a piece of property he has, I, I do believe it's.
Receive and tend to ordinance.
That's gonna go to ordinance, all those in favor?
You know the address?
How is?
Four, four seventy-two, four seventy-four, four seventy-six Appleton Street, I filed it for him, I'm just saying who the property's for. It, it came from me, I filed it for him, so that's an ordinance, all those in favor? All opposed, G is from Counsel Glass of Laura Martinez, that the city council through appropriate committee consider a drop and pickup for two parking spots for a van that will pick up and drop off, um, those who attend the V Care Adult at two hundred to two ten High Street. Uh, so send that to probably ordinance for parking spots, all those in favor?
Alright.
All opposed, H is from Counsel Sullivan, which is from the CPA with regards to the. with regards to the Jackson Street First Homeroes project. Send that to finance.
Second.
All those, all those, Counsel Sullivan?
Yeah, it, we, we had already approved a hundred twenty thousand dollars. I'll, I'll leave it up to the chair of both committees. This is just for a change in the term. Uh, uh,
Yeah, I believe there was
and, uh, also about a, uh, uh, adding a restriction to it, uh, Habitat for Humanity's gonna take over the entire project.
Yeah, I believe there was two that were filed. There was one that was a mistake. I'm not sure if I have the right one, so it'd be better to send it to committee and make sure we have the right one that was being filed.
Yeah, I just
Because it late filed.
I'll, I'll leave it up to Joe and Dave, which one, because it's not, there's nothing financial changing here. It's just, uh, the tur- the terms of the contract, so.
Send it, send it to finance, so we can make sure. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Last one is from Counsel Murphy, Counsel McGee, Counsel Leahy, and anyone else who wants to sign on, or at the public safety committee inviting the chief of police, West Springfield Police Representative to discuss and address the illegal drag racing on city streets and come up with solutions to better address these issues. Send that to public safety. Uh, Counsel Bacon.
President, yes, um, I've been in communication with Chief Bebo about this matter, um, and he had indicated to us previously that it was a problem because of a limited overtime. And so I would like to be on this order. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
You can add me on, because you probably, you probably heard them all flying by my office for the last three hours.
I added Counsel Bacon, Counsel Bartley.
Um, Mr. President, add me on that Hillside Avenue is a speedway.
All right, so, and then we'll send that to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. I believe I got them all. Um, with that, motion would be to adjourn.
A move.
Everyone have a wonderful night. Enjoy the hot weather coming.
Happy summer.
Have a good one, everyone.
Hi, everybody.
Good night, take care.